I'd like to call this meeting to order and we'll start with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, would you take roll call, please?
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kern?
Here.
Mr. McCucci?
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
Here.
Mrs. Weed? Mr. De Liberto?
Here.
And Mr. Klein?
Here. Thank you. A couple of announcements, we did have an executive session prior to the meeting to discuss a personnel matter. And happy 2019, everybody. Okay, first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion, do you approve the minutes, the minutes as presented on board docs?
A-hoo.
Mr. Jackson, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Anderson, discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. This brings us to our first public comment of the evening. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody that has signed up for public comment?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Julia Henry?
Julia Henry, Strayer Middle School. I'd like to start this off with a quote, courage doesn't mean you don't get afraid, courage means you don't let fear stop you. This, I started a petition this week, this past week, and this petition is to add French one to the Quakertown Community High School curriculum for the 2019-2020 academic year and starting small, build a French program in Quakertown Community School District over the next few years. French is the second most learned language in the world, in fact, every public high school in Bucks and Montgomery County in Pennsylvania offers French as a world language option for students except three high schools, Quakertown Community High School, Potts Grove High School, and Harry S. Truman High School in Bristol Township School District. Despite strong student enrollment in French programs at the vast majority of local school districts, unfortunately, Quakertown Community School District, along with Bristol Township School District and Potts Grove School District, do not offer French, a school district with the academic caliber of QCSD should be on par with the rest of Bucks and Montgomery County. As far as QCSD's 100 million-plus budget, hiring a full-time French teacher would cost 1/10th of 1% of that budget. That's assuming the French teacher was full-time and cost $100,000. We only need a .5 French teacher or less to get a French program started next year. That is 1/20th of 1% of the QCSD budget or less. Adding a French program could be such a positive for QCSD, we could garner community involvement, we could have fundraisers, we could do something to offset the cost, please allow us as QCSD students and families this opportunity. For years, the QCSD administration repeatedly insisted that the reason that French is not offered is because there is no interest in French in QCSD. Dr. Harner, Superintendent, graciously agreed to a world language survey to determine student interest back in 2017. On November 17, 2017, 678 QCSD sixth and seventh graders took the world language survey. According to the survey results provided by Dr. Harner, 14% of the QCSD students taking the survey chose French as their first choice for a world language. That is approximately 95 students, as a result of that survey, QCSD offered French in a letter mail to academically eligible students on February 23, 2018. In response to that letter, 58 students that are current QCSD seventh and eighth graders selected French one as their language of choice during the course selection process for the 2018-2019 school year. Then on May 31, 2018, the parents of the 58 students that chose French were notified via email that French was abruptly canceled. QCSD never contacted us as the students that selected French to this date other than to ask us on June 21, June 1, 2018, in the cafeteria while we were eating lunch with our peers, to select our second choice for a world language. This issue is bigger than Quakertown Community High School. It's about reversing and increasing trend to close budget gaps by limiting world language options in public schools. Please show your support for world languages by signing this petition. Why French, at least 1/3 of our English language is derived from French, with many linguistics scholars proving it more closely to 50%. With so much of our English language derived from French, studying French boosts English vocabulary development, resulting in higher standardized test scores. Graduated students prepping for the verbal ability section of the MBA are often instructed to study specific French words to boost their score. In addition, studying French significantly helps student comprehension of medical and science textbooks because of our medical, because much of our medical and science terminology is based on French words. France itself is one of the major economies of the world and French direct investment is fourth largest in Pennsylvania with major corporations like Saint-Gobain, Arkham, Bograine, Sanof Posture, Ergas, Cross Felix, and many others based here. France ranks second for total number of international jobs in Pennsylvania with 49,091 jobs at 521 locations. French is one of the very few languages spoken all over the world, the US Department of State gives us a guide that Spanish and French will require 600 class hours for proficiency. German takes 750 class hours. And languages which are far different from English, specifically Mandarin Chinese, Arabic, Cantonese, Japanese, and Korean will take 2,200 class hours. 600 hours to become proficient in French is realistic. For all of these reasons, French is a practical, highly beneficial world language to all of QCSD students and our current global economy, French is the next most important addition to the QCSD curriculum. I started this petition seven days ago and in seven days, I received over 750 signatures in support of adding French one as an option for students in Quakertown Community School District for the 2019-2020 school year. On Tuesday night, I went to the freshman orientation at Quakertown High School. My mom will go into more detail in her speech, but the majority of what the principal said was about Quakertown High School being a place where students can follow our passions and properly prepare for our futures. That does not apply to me with the current lack of French, with the current lack of French one. I am focused, determined, motivated, hardworking, respectful, dedicated, and goal-oriented. I would love to stay in QCSD for high school. Can we work together to figure out a plan to add a French club and French one for next year? The administrators in this district frequently talk about planning for our own futures. I am doing everything in my power to properly plan for my future. Last night, I went to the Lehigh Valley Charter School for the Arts open house, I loved it. They won the blue ribbon in 2018, they offer French one through French four. I need to make a decision about where to go to high school. Please add French one so that I can stay here and flourish while achieving my dream and preparing for my future career, mercy.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
Leonard Messina?
Hi, Leonard Messina, living in Richland Township. I'm here tonight because of two newspaper articles that I read concerning my predecessor Joy's efforts to have French added to the high school curriculum. I believe French is an important language and, as Julia mentioned, apparently so do almost all school districts in Bucks and Montgomery Counties, with the notable exception of the three she mentioned, one of which, of course, is Quakertown School District. And lastly, it's obvious that big bucks have been spent on athletic facilities here in the school district. And I suppose that's okay, but as a taxpayer, I would like to see a very small fraction of that money be spent on implementing, teaching of French in the high school. And keep in mind that France is our oldest ally. And Joy mentioned lots of other reasons why French is important. And I'm sure if Dr. Harner and the school board wanted French to be taught in the school district, they would figure out a way to make it happen. So I end with a question, exactly why do any of you not wish to have French taught in the Quakertown School District? Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Henry?
Hi. Michelle Henry, Richland Township. Good evening. Bear with me. This is going to be hard for me to get through. I am Julia's mom and probably as most moms are, her biggest fan. If you are a parent, you know that more than anything, you want your children to be happy. You want your children to be successful. And you want your children through hard work and dedication to achieve their dreams. That's why I've been trying to get French here in Quakertown for so long. She's known since she was three that she had this calling to learn French. That happens to some people. We're a family with a strong faith, if you know me well, you have heard me say, it's in God's hands or it's all part of the plan. Some people know early in their life what the plan is, it's truly a calling. My brother told my parents when he was in sixth grade that he was going to go to the Naval Academy. He then proceeded to do everything he needed to do over the course of the next six years to ensure his appointment to the US Naval Academy. And four years after that, he was a Naval Academy graduate. I'm making that sound easy. It wasn't. He knew in sixth grade. I knew in first grade that I wanted to be a teacher, I was six or seven. I've stepped away for a few years to raise my family and I'm trying to figure out my next calling. Some people feel called to be a doctor or a nurse or a therapist or clergy. We have a student here tonight that just announced her acceptance at West Point. Do you remember when you first felt personally drawn to West Point? Third grade. Julia doesn't know this, but I brought her baby book tonight. Like the baby book of most first children, it's the most detailed of my three children's baby books. My second child has an inconsistent mix of photographs and memories. I don't even have a baby book for my third child, don't tell them. Anyway, from a very young age, language has been Julia's thing, first English. I have a note in this book that I asked Julia on May 4, 2008, as a very young three-year-old, do you know what the Bible is? And she replied, you mean the B-I-B-L-E? Little Julia replaced S's with F's, so she said fray instead of spray, feshal instead of special, and my personal favorite, sweaty instead of sweaty. Right around this time, Julia was following me into the house, she was a few steps behind me and the screen door closed before she got to it, she couldn't get the screen door to open. And as I was unpacking groceries, she called out to me, ayudeme, ayudeme, which means help me in Spanish. I didn't teach her that. Fast forward to January 2009, she was still three, but a month away from four. I asked Julia, if she could go to any kind of camp that summer, what would it be? In this baby book, I wrote that Julia thought for a second and said, well, I really want to go to French camp to learn French words. And that's when her calling began. Her vision has become refined over the years with the picture becoming clearer in her mind with each passing year. Which leads me to this past Tuesday night, I took Julia to the freshman orientation at Quakertown Community High School. The principal, David Finnerty, gave a 45-minute presentation to current eighth graders and their families. His speech included a lot of promises, which I wrote down. He started by saying, high school is about challenging yourself and following your passions. I agree. It should be about that, but Quakertown is one of three high schools in Bucks and Montgomery Counties, only three, that does not offer French, along with Potts Grove High School and Bristol Township High School. So students with a passion to learn the beautiful language are unable to follow their passion. Next, the principal said, we're going to ask you to work hard here to build your dream. Julia has come to you for the past four school board meetings in a row, because she wants more than anything to build her dream. The principal actually said, think about your end game and begin with the end in mind. Here is a focused, determined student trying to begin with the end in mind, only to have her own school district close their minds and hearts to a solution, rather than work together to figure out a way to get her to her end game. What else did the Quakertown High School principal say at freshman orientation this week? He said regarding classes, pretty much, if you're looking for it, we got it. His entire speech seemed in direct conflict with everything that Julia has been coming up here and saying over the course of her four speeches. Next, the principal said, we want you to think about charting your course and getting there, we're opening doors for students at the next level. Julia has spoken four times in a row. I have not seen any doors open to help her achieve her goals. It's been a series of deflated, closed doors. And she has often felt as though she was speaking directly to a brick wall.
Ms. Henry, please wrap up.
Finally, the Quakertown High School principal wrapped up his speech with, we want you to think about where you want to go and what you want to be, and we want to help you get there. We give students a voice in their education. This might be true for most students, but it's not true for Julia and all the other students that truly want to learn French here in Quakertown. I can't understand why every time there's a need for something that the administration wants to implement, the money is found. Yet when a student passionately pleads to learn something, they're ignored. Why did you go into education? Did you have a calling?
Ms. Henry, please.
Do you prioritize students? I'll be done in a moment. Do you make student-centered decisions? We've done everything we could possibly do to show you that yes, French is something that kids in Quakertown want to learn. You would not have to have a meet the French teacher night, kids would be lining up, you wouldn't have to post multiple announcements about it on social media. If you build it, they will come. This district has so many bright, focused, amazing students, but let's face it, there's many problems this district and all districts face. Misbehavior, disrespect, vaping, drugs, teenage pregnancy, truancy, academic probation. It's so deflating and discouraging when a hard-working student tries so hard to make a positive change, but time after time, her pleas fall on deaf ears. You have spent more time discussing misbehaviors, vaping, and suspicions at these board meetings than listening to hard-working, focused kids.
Ms. Henry, you're out of order, please, I'm asking you nicely, please stop now.
And that's an example, that I have one small paragraph left and you're saying that you don't have another 20 seconds.
We have, we have given you plenty of time, you're way over your limit, I've never cut you off before, I've asked you to end, okay? We have a lot to get through tonight.
I could have been done in the amount of time that you just did that. But this is an example. So I don't know why you don't want to keep someone hard-working and focused because she needs to make a decision about where she's going to go to high school. And she wants to pick here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lara Eltonami?
Lara Eltonami, Quakertown Community High School, Richland Township. I am speaking in support of adding French as a language course in the 2019-2020 curriculum. Before I express my thoughts, I would like to add some background knowledge about myself. I am a part of Reality, a panel of teenagers who, just like me, are opinionated, strong-minded, and bold. We write articles on various topics from pop culture to current events and we, of course, express our opinions while writing these topics. Two months ago, in November, I wrote my first article on adding French to our school curriculum, citing reasons such as strong connectivity in the classroom and real-world preparation. Two months later, or three, three days ago on Monday, I received an email from Michelle Henry saying that she saw my article and wanted to reach out to me because her eighth-grade daughter, Julia, was also advocating to add French to the school curriculum. In fact, she is the reason why I'm standing here speaking to you all. She has also shared me a petition to forge forward this case so that I could sign it and share it to my high school contacts. With a little bit of my help, she reached a little over 300 signatures, mostly from people locally. Tuesday, I've gotten an email from Julia saying that she had gotten good and bad news, with the good news being that there were 300-plus people supporting this case by signing this petition and the bad news being that Dr. Harner would not add French to the 2019-2020 school curriculum. I find this very disappointing news to hear, but regardless, I would always support Julia and the Henry family and I myself will never give up any hopes in there being French, there being a French course in Quakertown. There are multiple reasons as to why I am in support of adding French to the school curriculum. One, while I am learning French in my free time, I use an app called DuLingo, which isn't really the best app to use in terms of everyday speaking, but regardless, that is the resort I have to use to teach myself to learn French. And a part of that, I am also learning German and I'm taking a course in a high school and I am in German for honors. The bad part about the French being, using French, using DuLingo as a French app is I'm so overcrowded with schoolwork, I find myself having to delete the app every so often because there would be periods where I would straight up not use the app at all. Because of this, I feel a class will not only refine my skills in French such as speaking, but will also unite a community of people with its vibrant culture and beautiful language. I would like to study French management as a possible course in King's College London, a constituent university which is not only a part of the University of London, but also a part of the Russell Group, an association of 24 public research universities in the United Kingdom which take pride in flourishing and continuing to make social, economic, and cultural impacts through world-leading research and teaching. When I was looking at the entry requirements for this course, one of the requirements was taking at least one French course. Since there was no French course here, it would be virtually impossible to show verification in taking a French course because you'd also have to show certification from D E L F, which is an institution for French students. Since there's no, oh wait, sorry. Now, the only part in which I would have to fully show certification in taking French would be having to take a SAT subject test, but there would be no way for me to go in blind taking such a test. For these reasons, I have spoken to you all, I support adding French to the Quakertown curriculum, whether it is next year or is five years from now. Not only are there personal reasons such as it being beneficial to my future of pursuing a business management career in Europe, but as a language of beauty, culture, and worldwide connectivity. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment as president of the school board and address Mrs. Henry and Julia Henry right now regarding this issue because obviously you guys are extremely passionate about it, you've made that perfectly clear. I want to speak for the board here because I think you guys deserve an answer, okay? The administration chose at a point in the past to stop offering French and that decision was made based on enrollment, it was made based on demand, and it was made for various other reasons. It didn't happen over a short period of time, it took a long period of time, actually. The same would be the opposite, if we were to add the program, it would take time to build, there would need to be a plan put in place, both short-term and long-term, and so forth. Because of the timing right now for next year's schedule, the budget season is upon us and for other reasons, it would be almost impossible for us to do what you're asking us to do and get a plan in place so that we could offer French in the 2019-2020 school year. There's been many discussions on this board, as well as with the administration, on what can we do, are we doing the right thing, is there a bigger demand for French than what we're seeing, so forth and so on. And I speak for the board tonight when I say to you that, at this point, we're not going to be able to do what you're asking us to do. And I know that really stinks for you guys, Julia, I understand your passion. Mrs. Henry, you've made that very clear. And as a parent myself, I understand your emotions with this, okay? But I felt you deserved to hear it from us that this isn't going to happen in the timeframe that you're, that you're looking for. The administration is always looking to see what it is that we need to do, okay? If the demand for French begins to rise and it looks like that's the good thing for the administration to do, to present to the board, to add French back again, I'm not going to say that's not going to happen. It could happen in two years, three years, five years, if the requirement is there. But again, I wanted you to hear that from us so that I don't want you to feel led on that maybe this is going to happen and if we, you know, continue to, you know, come up and speak and everything, that it might lead to a different decision. So I wanted you to hear that from me. And I'm sorry that that's not what you're looking for, the outcome, but I felt you, you deserved an answer. So I'm sorry. Why don't you speak maybe after the meeting with Dr. Harner, I know that's something that they're looking into. Maybe he can give you some more details on that, okay? Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment at this time? No? Okay. Moving on to the student representative report. And tonight, Elizabeth, and I'm going to try not to mispronounce your last name, Miss Siri?
Yes.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Missiri and I am currently a senior at the high school. Thus far, senior year has been great. Despite the stress applying to college entails, the senior class is very excited to hear back from schools and for our next chapter. Many of my classmates were selected for interviews from the University of Pennsylvania and many have already been accepted to exceptional colleges such as Penn State, Temple, Westchester, and the University of Scranton. Personally, I have recently received the principal congressional nomination from PA District 8 to the United States Military Academy at West Point and therefore am guaranteed a seat in the class of 2023. I am extremely excited for my next four years at the academy and I am positive that the Quakertown Community School District has played an important role in preparing me for my life there, as well as my future career as an army officer. I plan to major in chemistry and life sciences so I can later branch medical services. Medical career pathways has validated my inspiration to pursue a career in health services. I'm confident that without the amazing teachers, counselors, and coaches I have been lucky enough to have, I would not be where I am today. For those people, I am extremely thankful. As graduation rapidly approaches, every day gets a little bit more bitter, but a little bit more sweet. The class of 2019 is ready to move on and make our marks on society. But nostalgia sets in at the thought of not seeing our childhood best friends every day. However, once a panther, always a panther, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll do well.
Thank you.
I just want to give you a couple pieces of advice I'm sure Dr. Harner has, don't volunteer for anything. And just play the game and you'll do great.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Next is the superintendent's report.
Yes, sir. I think most of the folks in the audience, most of the folks in the audience tonight are here for recognitions and this is a night where we have a lot of them. First off, all you baseball players, come on up front, front and center. Both the, I see, Jeff, you're here. So you come on over here and help me a little bit.
Okay.
Well, I was told you were going to be off at the coaches clinic too.
Nope.
Okay, the, our head coach, John Pallone, could not make it. But John, numerous times in the fall reminded me that we did not recognize you guys last fall for your, your championship in the springtime. So we're, baseball is not a fall sport, I guess it is for some of you guys. How many of you play ball in the fall? Okay. But this is for last spring's recognition. Well, and I'm going to read John's, John's note that he sent up to us and to Sylvia today. He said, the we is, the baseball team started off the season last year with a great trip to Myrtle Beach. They've, that's become a tradition for our baseball team to bring the team together, coaches together, and I'm sure a lot of support parents that are out there. The players had a great experience putting it on the line and learning more about themselves. We, they returned to an extremely rainy season. I guess that's, and there's a point for all this talking about rain, if those are on the facilities committee. One of the biggest games at, at the beginning of the season was when they were 3-0 and in the league and when they played Wissahickin, who was 3-0 on their JV field because Memorial Stadium was unplayable. That's, that's our home field. We partnered with the Borough when the field in the back was, became the sports complex and a little history there, my first year, that field could only be used four times because as a reminder, the high school was built on a swamp. By the end of the fourth inning, they were up 11-0 at this away game because of our memorial field being wet and eventually won the game 13-2. Their biggest game at the end of the season was against Plymouth White Marsh, who was in second place behind Quaker in second place behind Quaker Town. We were able to get up to a 2-0 lead in the second inning and eventually pulled out the 5-0 win. Most of the memorable moments was the QYBA night against Uppermoreland. Since it was a night game, we found out Wissahickin had lost early in the day, and our win 5-3 that night won us the very first suburban one league championship in over 10 years. And that's why we're here tonight. Show them the trophy. They finished the year 8-0 win over Plymouth White Marsh that started on our, the game that started on the JV field. Another point that Jonathan wanted to make, because Memorial Field again was not playable. But after a downpour, they had to finish the game the next day on their turf field. They lost in the District One playoffs to Satterton in our home game that had to be played away at Plymouth White Marsh. Yeah, I can hear this from our baseball moms and dads in the back. Thank you very much. This was a team effort here, talking about tonight's game and our honor, but also to talk about, we have some work to do in our sports field, and I know that the facilities, members of the facilities committee, all the members of the board are well aware of this. Mr. Pallone, some of your moms and dads have been coming to board meetings, committee meetings to talk about it. But tonight, this is about you, and it's about honoring where baseball is now, up in the top of the league, and we're very proud of you. So congratulations to boys' baseball for Quaker Town. Anything you'd like to say?
If I may have a word for just a second. Your coach came in and spoke at, you know, the facilities committee meeting and explained all of the challenges you guys have, you know, even to practice at times. And he spoke so highly of your effort, your, you know, team attitude and doing what it takes to win. So I just wanted to say, we're all very proud of you, and under such difficult conditions, I mean, my gosh, that's great. Thank you so very much, and congratulations.
One last, one last thing before we step down. Any of your dads, moms from baseball dad supporters, or anything I missed? No, I'm good. Thank you very much, guys. Haley, where are you?
She's in Florida. Playing soccer.
Okay. Haley Purcell, who is not present, one of our student board members that we have up here, like Lizzie, is recognized for, she's not present tonight because she's at an elite soccer tournament down in Florida. She is all-league, all-southeastern. Is she all-state two years in a row now? We don't know yet.
One year.
One year. As a junior, she was on the, was first-team all-state. She's going off to play soccer at Lafayette, not too far away from us. You know Maria very well. Maria was the Booster Club parent, president for many, many years, and so we're going to miss both Haley here at the board meetings, out there in the field, and the high school because she is, her leadership is just as sound as Lizzie's, as are a lot of our students at the high school. So that's Haley Purcell, so congratulations. Maddie, I know you're here. Come on up. Jeff, Mary Jo, come on up. You can come up too. Jeff, you can come up. This is really cool because I watched the Eagles game at his joint there. Jeff is the owner of, and Mary Jo are owners at the West End, those who are familiar with that. And I watched the Eagles game on Sunday there. Thank you. But this is, but this is all about Madeline. Madeline is fifth-place finish in the SOL girls golf tournament, 14th finish in the District One tournament this year. The highest finish ever for a Quaker Town girl, and I wanted to make sure that everyone in the board recognized you for your efforts. We're very proud of you. She's on the basketball team, girls' basketball team, so how was practice today? Have great practice, very busy young lady, and she's going to go on to greatness, and a lot of schools are interested in her. I think that what I learned on Sunday, that it was, University of Boulder right now is one of them. They're looking, okay. There, there you go. So anyway, thank you very much for joining us tonight, and congratulations.
Madeline, Madeline, did you have to play a lot in the rain this year with the golf?
Yeah. But the golf greens were dry. That's for the, no, the baseball dads are gone. Just, that was for them. I was kidding. Bad joke. Nick, come on up. Nick's not here. No, that's right. Nick, Nick Lovinsky is tonight with Coach Bannister, and that's why Coach Bannister's not here tonight also. He's down as a candidate, nominated for the Maxwell Award, and at the Maxwell Award Dinner, which is really an incredible honor. Also, Tom Brader, our AP US History teacher. His son Ethan from Palisades School District, their starting quarterback for the last three or four years, is also nominated for that, which is, that's a Philadelphia area award. Thanks, thank you. Well, Nick was selected as Maxwell Award nominee, an elite honor. He led the team in tackles with 127 this year. He was also, I believe, the defensive team captain out there, correct? Because I always saw him looking back to the sidelines to Coach Bannister, because Coach Bannister ran the defense, and he's an outstanding student also. Michael Tera, are you here?
He's not here.
Oh, man, I was going to roast him tonight.
He's on video. Go ahead.
Michael, you're out there somewhere. No, I'm kidding. Well, Michael Tera is a very, he was this spirit, I think, guys for the football team, the spirit, the backbone, and the referent power leader out there on the field over the last couple of years, both wrestler, football player, and whatnot. But that comes because he's a thespian. If you look, who's got IMBD on their phone? IMBD? Come on, don't tell me I'm the only geek who follows films. You are? Type in Michael Tera. Michael Tera literally is a Hollywood rock star. He appeared in a movie with Michael Douglas, and he's been on some soap. So besides being an outstanding football player, he led the team in rushing and touchdowns before his injury, which was at the upper Dublin game, guys? Upper Dublin game is when Michael got hurt, and he really had a very bad injury, and it's amazing how he's already back and walking and whatnot. Second year receiving all-league selection for both offense and defense. He was the heartbeat of the team. Ashton Hurd, football, you here?
Yep.
Come on. Come on up, big guy. Parents here?
Uh, no, not tonight.
Uh, not tonight, but you got all dressed up. That's good. Looking good. Ashton Hurd is selected for all-league lineman for the third consecutive year, and 67 tackles and how many sacks? Five, five sacks. So congratulations to you, very proud of you, and we're very pleased with your athleticism. Nick Frash, thanks. Nick Frash is not here tonight. He's out working, which is a good thing. Nick was first-team all-league for both offense and defense with 34 tackles and five sacks. Tyler Merworth. Come on, big guy. There you go. Now, this is a guy that can catch the ball on his back.
Can you explain that, please?
Yes, sir. I remember, as you know, I like to walk the sidelines, and I stay out of the coach's way, but I like to walk the sidelines, and I remember him, the ball, he tipped it in the air, in the air, he was laying on his back, and he caught the thing. He is an incredible athlete. He's a sophomore, and I guess you're now going to be in the running besides you, a wide receiver? Wide receiver, and on defense, you had safety, weren't you? Safety, because he's fast, very fast. And you were only sophomore and first-team all-league. Only sophomore, and he led the team in receiving yards, and you're now in contention to be our quarterback. That's what I understand.
What, you're going to throw it to yourself?
Well, he's that fast. Congratulations, buddy. I got all the football players correct? That's what I thought. As you can tell by their shirts for the school board members, I know what these guys do, but you may not, except for the shirts. These are our varsity cheerleaders. They are just incredible, and frankly, they're the only team, I think, since I've been here, now we've had individuals, but only team that made it to the state championships in Hershey since I've been here. We've had individuals wrestling. But this year, they won District One out of 42 high schools. 42 high schools. See, and see all the gold up here. Truly amazing, and we've come, Coach Mahal and her team, you've been here for, this is your fourth year? Their fourth year is Coach Mahal. She came out, she is an alum of Quaker Town, the coach, let me talk about the coaches a little bit. Alum at Quaker Town, they're all alums out of Quaker Town. Coach Mahal was coaching down at Strayer, and we needed to make a coaching change. Coach Mahal stepped up, and our program was transformed. Transformed. I get it, it's a team effort, a team, it's a team effort and all that, but definitely cheerleaders are the backbone of the spirit, and they help lead our student spirit section out there and all that. So, Mr. President, what do you have to say?
I say congratulations, ladies, and Coach Mahal, could we get a demonstration of some award-winning cheer, maybe?
There you go. I knew this was coming. I teed them up. Come on, ladies.
Is that possible?
You have a video? You have a video?
Key up the video.
Oh, my video. Oh, wow. Let me, well, you watch the video first, and then we'll talk.
Hi, I'm Dr. Bill Harner, superintendent of Quaker Town Community School District, West Point class of 1978. In front of you are the cheerleaders of Quaker Town, District One champions in Pennsylvania for cheerleading in 2018. We have a rocket for you. Go Army. Ready, ladies? Boom! Ah! You say rah rah! You say rah rah! Ooh rah! Ooh rah!
I think you checked it out. How many thousand views that you have there? It's pretty, what's it say?
It's trying to sell ad revenue.
Hey, we're here, right before the Army-Navy game, beginning of December, I asked the ladies to help me out, promote Army-Navy football, which was that Saturday, and we were looking for a ad trick, getting a third victory in a row after losing to Navy 13 times in a row. It was the war. And so the ladies helped out, and they learned quickly. Naturally, I have a very shy and retiring personality, so I was forced to do that. Anyway, back to you guys. You have come a long way in four years. You have come a long way. You've been down to Orlando a couple times in the last couple of years, doing great things, placing down there. You're winning the District One championship. I think the PIAA, this is the fourth year that they've had, fourth or fifth year for the state championships for cheerleading, correct?
Last weekend, we won suburban one.
And last weekend, you won suburban one league?
Yes.
Again, second year in a row, so we're good there. You know, their ambition is to beat my previous district, Cumberland Valley, which always wins number one, so that's their minimum objective, is beating Cumberland Valley. So congratulations, I'm proud of you guys. Coaches, you've done marvelous. Ladies, how many years, how many, four years on the cheerleading squad? How many of you been started at the beginning with Coach Mahal? That's great, thank you. Team captains, where are you? Thanks for your leadership. Thank you.
We're leaving for states tomorrow morning, so I wanted to go.
Yeah, they're going to states tomorrow morning. Caleb, where are you? Caleb, and mom and dad, and brother, come on up. Come on up. Yeah, why not? This is the Bylics', right? Correct? Is that how you say it?
Bylic.
Bylic. And Caleb? Wow! So this is you. Let me read a story about Caleb. He's at Nitek Elementary School. Inspiring greatness is part of the school's mission. Second grader Caleb Bylic is a shining example of what can be done when that mission is accomplished. Wow, big things come with little packages here. Caleb helped organize his community to raise $1,715 for the Upper Bucks Coboo Shelter. Caleb learned about homelessness in talks with his parents, and he learned about goal-setting from his teacher, Mrs. Rivera. Is she here?
No.
No.
Unfortunately sick.
Oh, unfortunately sick. I know she'd be up there with you, or I'd ask her to come up there with you, which I tend to do. Caleb came up with an idea to sell hot chocolate and baked goods to raise money. Was that your, you're a big idea, huh? I love hot chocolate, I wouldn't have been there. He made signs and flyers for the event, and the idea started to spread. Like all good leaders, like Caleb is, Caleb asked his friends for their help too. That's a good start. You're learning all about the Covey Seven Habits, aren't you? And what's the first habit? Be proactive. Awesome. Okay, so many people were inspired by Caleb's idea, and it became a community event. Friends played musical instruments, many people donated items to sell, and it became an awesome project. Caleb's brother, Hayden, Hayden of the sixth-grade center, and Cameron at the high school helped out along with their other neighborhood children by providing live music. What do you play?
Saxophone.
What do you play?
Saxophone.
Oh, wow.
I just wish you had.
Okay, that's great. Caleb's brother, Ben Gregory, also a second, friend Ben Gregory, is also second grader at Nitek, made baked goods and helped at the stand, and his friend Justin Miller, a nine-year-old homeschooled student, also assisted. Caleb far exceeded his goal. He and his family presented a check for the home, to help our homeless in this community with a check for $1,715 to the shelter. So the audience knows, the board knows, every year, people, homeless families come and go, and we have no, somewhere between 70 and 80 students every year that walk into our schools who are homeless. I'm sure there's a lot more families like that. When I first moved to the community and I was the interim, and I was living in a hotel, I know that the hotel was putting one of those families up there because I was out there in the lobby talking to them. We have a serious problem across this nation. We have a problem right here in the community, and Caleb, big guy, you've made a big difference. So congratulations, and we're very proud of you, and this is going to be awesome, because there's other students that are, I think last year began the event for packaging goods, what's her name?
Amy.
Yeah, and then she did it again this year, and I think you're going to be following in her footsteps and many others as a young budding leader. So congratulations, keep those seven habits going. And what's the last one? You are awesome. Sharpen the saw, you're doing well there. Is that, I'm good, I think.
That's all I have.
You're good? Okay.
For that, I think you're a partner.
Right. Mr. Cuzo, is that video of the cheer that Dr. Harner led on our website?
It is not, it's actually just a link in Twitter right now.
Oh, I think, I, I think that needs to go front and center on the website.
It's not school board, District One ladies, it's sort of everyone.
So, do we like hashtag #GoArmyOfficially on our official Twitter feed or something? Because you know.
I went to the game, got a ticket, and I went to the game, it was awesome. Of course, we won. Oh, I'm next up on the, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
We keep on moving. The next speaker, I asked teacher, English teacher at the high school, and our, I guess you're the English coordinator, English department chair, so to speak, for the district, or for the high school, anyway, Rachel Germin, had to come on up. She teaches AP Language for our students, AP Seminar, and what else?
American Lit and American Lit Honors.
Ah, great. Most importantly, last year, if you recall, right around Martin Luther King Day, when it was a snow day, but it was a snow makeup day, we were in school, we had a lot of really good things going on in the school district for Martin Luther King Day. Every student was touched with activities, multiple activities probably, for, about Martin Luther King, and about diversity, and all that. But this year, as you know, Monday is, is now gonna be a holiday for us moving forward. Mr. Agmonowicz, other members of the board, mentioned about, and we were already behind the scenes, started talking about National Day of Service, and Rachel stepped forward and took the leadership, and I'd like her to talk about this Monday's program.
Hello. Hi. So, years ago, we started talking about using this as a day of service. We have had it in the past as a school day, but in the eighties and nineties, it became a day of service federally, and it became a holiday, but the Martin Luther King Organization always asked for it to be a day on and not a day off, which was really important to them. Dr. King stood for the beloved community, things that he saw were a problem in not only the African-American community, but also the national community as a whole, and he believed that as a community, that we needed to work together in order to combat those things, not just once a year, obviously, every day, but in his honor, they started the Day of Service on his or on or around his birthday, that we hold every January on a Monday. And so, when we finally had the opportunity to use this as a day of service, when you so graciously allowed us to have this day as a day off, we decided that we would like to use it as a day on, in honor of Dr. King and his work. And so, this year, for the first time ever, and hopefully the first of many, January 21st will be a day on for many faculty and students. We will be doing a day of service, both in Bucks, Montgomery, Lehigh, and potentially Philadelphia counties. We have many students who are working on this, so it became a holiday in 1986, but it first became a service in 94. It was a federal initiative, again, the day on and not the day off, and King focused particularly on his beloved community that combated poverty racism and what he called militarism, which included things like violence within and around the communities. We had a video that students put together, that I won't show to you, this is mostly for our students, but the thought process here was giving our students an idea of some of the background information about Dr. King, the Day of Service, and what to look forward to in order for them to sign up. And then this is our actual timeline for the day. Starting at 8:00 AM in the Quakertown Cafeteria, High School cafeteria, we're gonna be having a breakfast, and then we're also going to be having a speaker there between 9:00 and 9:30, tentatively, but definitely speaking during sometime between 8:00 and 9:30, will be Pastor Gregory Edwards. He is a pastor in the Lehigh Valley, he's lived there for about 25 years, he is a Martin Luther King scholar, he's a graduate of Morehouse College, he's the CEO of a community organization in Lehigh County that works to better some of those elements that Dr. King talked about in his beloved community, and Pastor Edwards is gonna be coming and talking to us about Martin Luther King, his initiatives, the Day of Service, his work with Dr. King as a scholar of his work, and kind of start us off on a great day. Starting at 9:30, we're gonna be transporting students and staff to local areas around Quakertown, Bucks, Lehigh County, and Philadelphia, to various service projects. This, again, is Pastor Gregory Edwards, the name of his church is the Resurrection Life Community Church, and then from that, he branched off into Resurrection Community Development Corporation, and then again, some more of his accolades, rounding out with the NAACP Men of Vision Award. In terms of our opportunities, we have 12 opportunities currently for students to sign up for, church of, and a lot of these were really great community-based activities that we pulled together, not just myself and my colleagues in the high school, but also teachers and staff people from around the district, as well as community members. We had a really great showing from Pastor David Kratz and Frank Dorenzo from East Swamp Church come out and help connect us with many of the local churches in the area and their food pantries, so you'll see quite a showing from those. Also, Church of the Brethren, Fish Pen Ridge, Quakertown Community Food Pantry, Trumborough Real Food Pantry. We're also gonna be working with Hope Against Heroin, which is a local service organization that works with addicts, the recovering addicts, they have a store on Main Street in Quakertown called the Restore Store, and we're gonna be sending students there to help organize the store. Lehigh Valley Volunteer Center is an organization, actually, that Dr. Kelly directed us to very graciously, that helps to organize events around the Lehigh County, and they have a lot of events on Dr. King's Day of Service, and we're gonna be working in particular with the Sixth Street Shelter. Life Path is a organization that actually works with homeless communities in the Lehigh Valley area. Quakertown Borough is gonna be coming to the high school, and we're gonna be helping them prepare for the Easter egg hunt in March and April by helping to fill Easter eggs. Family Services Association of Bucks County as well. Share Food is a farm on the edge of Philadelphia that works, is a working farm that provides food to the area, they need help with organizing seeds and preparing crops for the wintertime. Phoebe Richland, as you know, is a local nursing home, we have students going to perform as well as to participate in activities there, and then Laurel House is a local shelter, particularly for women survivors of domestic violence. Our students will be putting together wish list items and actually organizing cookbooks for, for women who are leaving to take with them, to help them in their next steps. We put together a website that you can visit, it is pinned on the homepage of Quakertown High School's website, that gives us some information, it also has our Twitter feed pinned on the front page of the website, there is some background information about Dr. King and his work, our 2019 Day of Service, and then we also have two links there now that include an ongoing, a list of ongoing service opportunities that we intend to keep adding to throughout the year, so that it's not just a one-day event for us, as well as featured students. We have a student named Angela Becker, who earlier this year inspired our high school students to go and work with an organization called Feed Your Starving Children, where we put together huge food packages to be sent to various countries overseas who are in need, and she was an eighth grader who emailed Dr. Finerty, asked to do this when she was in ninth grade, and was able to pull together hundreds of students from across our district to put that together. And so, if you click on our featured students, you'll see a little bit about that event, as well as pictures there as well. If you also go to the website, there is a link to our signup genius, where students have been signing up. We have about 120 students signed up all across our area, and we're very, very excited to be able to do this, so we really thank you for the opportunity to do this, and we hope that we make the district proud. Thank you.
Ms. Germin, I'd like to thank you for all the work. I mean, obviously, this, to put this together as quickly as you have, and to see that list of what's going on, that's amazing, so thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you.
Ms. Edwards, would you talk about the Safe to Say and the resolution that we, a draft resolution that we'd like the board to consider?
Sure. As I think everyone is aware, part of Act 44, which has had all of the provisions around school safety in it, part of that legislation included the creation of a state-level anonymous tip line called Safe to Say. And there's been a lot of people at the state level that have been working very hard to get Safe to Say implemented and rolled out across the state. While, while intentioned, and while I believe it could have a positive impact on school safety, there are a lot of concerns that school districts have raised regarding the, some of the details of the implementation, the way it's being rolled out, the timeline, and some of the things around how it will be, be implemented. So, essentially, our requirements, and we've met all our requirements and our deadlines and so forth, but we have a team of five people that have to be identified and went to a day of training in King of Prussia last month to learn how to use the system. And as tips come into the state level, the Attorney General's Office has created like a triage call center that will do some triaging of them, and then refer them to school districts for action. And they have, there are a list of items that are 24/7 notification, so we're required to respond to tips 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, even when school is not in session. Many of the items that get the 24-hour calls are not necessarily school-related items, so when they did the list of items that fall in that category, a lot of them are things that might occur in the community that might only have a tangential relation, relationship to the school district. There isn't any funding that came with the Safe to Say program, so the requirements for implementation and the follow-up on the tips and reporting the outcome of all the tips and investigating all of the tips, those are all things that, that fall to the school district. The police departments are also notified at the same time, particularly when there's a 24/7 tip, and it's the district's responsibility to liaison with the 911 call centers and figure all that out. Officer Lee has been very helpful for us in that regard. So, what is in Board Docs, you know, we are following all of the requirements, and, and, you know, and as I said, I believe the, the concept certainly is well-intentioned and is trying to keep children safe, I'm, I, but along with many other districts, we have a number of concerns about, about the program. We do have a meeting with Senator Mensch tomorrow to talk about it, because the deadline and so forth for it being implemented is in legislation, so the Attorney General's Office doesn't have the flexibility to adjust it, even if they were inclined to, to do that. So, there is a resolution in Board Docs, it was actually developed by Centennial School District, there's a different version of it that a number of school districts in the western part of the state have adopted. The one that Centennial adopted, I think, better represented the concerns that we would have here in Quakertown, and so, we put that up there tonight to, you know, for your feedback and thoughts, and to see if that's something that you would support us submitting in order to, to document our concerns about the, the program and the way it's being implemented. There's also a number of privacy concerns, a lot of things that are student-related are not necessarily appropriate to be shared with law enforcement, and there's some things that go in the reverse, and so, those are just, I guess, that would be the highlight of the, of some of the concerns that, that we have.
Would this be put on the schedule next meeting to, to approve?
That, if you would like to wait to then, and that's, that's fine. There have been several resolutions going around the state being approved by boards, and this, I believe, is identical to what Centennial approved right before the holiday. It's a, it's a proactive approach, it's a positive think piece to ask the state to consider, or at least be on the record to consider. This is an intense requirement, unfunded requirement, and labor-intensive. They said it to our presentation at King of Prussia, where they had all the regional superintendents, and, and five of us, they required us to be at the meeting, and it was, so we took out the entire senior leadership of the district, it was Lisa, Dr. Hoffman, it was Ms. Edwards, myself, Mr. Finerty, and Janet Pallone, and five of us going down there. Every district had to have five people, their safety coordinator for the district, which is Nancy Anne, and the rest of us, and, and what we were told there, that we would get, from their prediction, is we'll get about 320 tips a year that we have to adjudicate, that we have to respond to, investigate, and respond back to the state. 320.
Just our school.
Just our school district, so if you look at it.
Where do those go now?
There, there's no system for that.
And that's, that's one of the concerns, and that's reflected in the, in the resolution, is right now, you know, kids do tell us things, you know, they have, they have trusting relationships with adults that they work with, whether it's teachers or administrators or the SRO, and, you know, when, we get a lot of information from students, when they become concerned about a friend's behavior or, or something going on that they think adults need to know about. And we don't really want this to replace that trusting relationship that, that they have with adults, not to mention the delay that would take place.
Right.
If people decide. Part of the requirement is that we give students one hour of training on the, on the app, so we're, that, that's a mandy. So, it can be done online, we can bring in a trainer to do it at no cost, that, that doesn't, if we chose to do it that way, that there is not a cost to us, but we're required to train every student from fifth grade and up on the app and how to use it. You know, so that's, that's one, another one of the concerns, is that, that, could it, could something be reported that somebody might not be comfortable telling an adult? Yes, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna like, you know, completely downplay it, but the, the way it's being implemented, I think, I think we're gonna have some, some problems. And they calculated the 300 and some tips, they base it on how many students you have in those grade levels, and then there's, from their historical data in other states or other schools that have rolled this out, you know, how many tips are generated, and how many are emergency 24/7 tips, and how many are, you get an email at 6:00 in the morning instead of a call in the middle of the night tips, and all of that.
I think it'd be a great way to completely disrupt a school. It's pretty awesome.
I actually took the time to read through the whole resolution, I'm not sure how many other individuals on the board had that opportunity, but there was a citation to a project or similar program in Colorado, so I actually went further and researched the product, the system that Colorado rolled out, and one of the, two of the issues that I see why we need to consider the resolution, obviously, we need to, nobody else has probably read as much as I have, and so, push it maybe a month, we'll talk about that in a second, but it's completely anonymous, I mean, 100% anonymous, and what Nancy Anne was saying already, is we have, our students a lot of times feel free to share, but in this case, there's no names, other than, I'm worried about this person, and further, that's led to instances, at least in Colorado, where you talk about cyberbullying, here's an instance where a child doesn't like another child, so they say, oh, I'm worried that that kid's doing drugs, and completely false. Because it's completely anonymous, the kids feel that this is the way they can torment people they're not happy with, and that's mentioned in the resolution, that the system needs to be addressed to handle these issues, and it currently, it isn't set up that way, to our knowledge, so.
Interesting, thank you, Ron. Is the administration recommending that we, you know, use this?
If it's, it's your first time you've seen this.
Yep.
At least we put it on, on your screen tomorrow, Nancy and myself, Gary will be over in Palisade School District, Senator Mensch is holding his, once a quarter, once every four months, superintendent's meeting, that we started first here in Quakertown back in 2014, and, and this is the topic.
Okay.
And I've talked to folks in, in the Capitol about it, the proponents, he is Senator Brown's office, and, and in turn, talked to the AG's office, Mike Verb, who's led, head of legislative affairs, who is the late former state senator down here, I believe, in Montgomery County, and he's gonna be at the meeting, or, and, or somebody else from, from the policy team in the AG's office to hear to our concerns. So, something was quickly passed in Harrisburg, there was- There were, was limited input from the field, but very limited, and it's caused unanimously across this county, the superintendents have signed on and said, slow down, let's fix it before we implement it.
Okay. Would it cause any, any problems to ask that it be put on next month's agenda? I would just like to review that and read it and do some research on it, too. So, everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I, of course, would grant immediate permission to not comply. They're not gonna send us to jail.
Not you, sir. It's always, you know, and the John Dean of the district right here.
Three squares a day, not a bad thing. Sounds like a subject for the KernCast web show.
Tell you to gain 50 pounds because it's unhealthy.
Last but not least on the superintendent report. Danny, Jamie, you're up.
Thank you, Darker DeHarner. Tonight, we're gonna give you an update of the design development drawings for the Nightig Elementary School. This is in preparation for the public hearing, the Act 34 hearing, and we're gonna explain what that's all about tonight. So we're gonna give you, we're gonna go over the design development drawings and kinda update you on progress that we've made since we, since we last met. And Jamie's gonna cover the cost estimate. By the way, I'm joined tonight by David Schrader and Jamie Lynch from Dewey. The Act 34 hearing, you might think is being part of the plan com process, but you might question why we're doing this if it's, if we're not getting reimbursement for the project, and we'll go into that a bit. Keep scrolling. So Joe's gonna be my scroller here, and I'm gonna turn my back to you temporarily as I point out the various parts of the building that we're gonna talk to you about tonight. So the plan hasn't changed too much since the last time you saw it. We're looking at Penrose Avenue here, Erie Avenue here. The existing building is, starts here, you come into the site here, the existing building is about in this area here. You can see the expansion of the two-story addition located on the side there. One of the things that we do whenever we wanna get into a design and construction project is try to resolve some of the existing conditions on the site. And one of the problems that was inherent to the site is the congestion at the parent and bus drop-off area because they're merging together. So we wanna create a separate parent and bus drop-off. We're gonna be blocking this entrance here coming into the school with a gate. That'll be used for emergency access only. And bringing the vehicular traffic into the site here and looping them around this cul-de-sac and then dropping off at the new main entrance here. That allows parents to have a long queue line here so that they're not backing up onto the residential streets. We're also improving the parking on the site by adding significantly more parking. There's a parking lot here now and one over to the side here. We're expanding that for some additional staff parking here and here, as well as providing some play area adjacent to that. The bus traffic will be coming around the backside of the property and dropping off at a new bus-loading entrance here in the back of the school and then exiting out. So we have a clear separation between the bus and parent drop-off areas. If you look at the floor plan, what we've done is created new main entrance to the school. Right now, the school entrance is right about here. We're pushing it over to the side here and expanding, this is the line of the existing building now. We're expanding the administration area here to provide additional office space and support space for the faculty. New secured main entrance coming in here where you need to check into the administration before going out into the rest of the building. We'll be completely renovating the existing wing here, that'll be the primary wing, and renovating the existing cafeteria, library, and music rooms and art room. The portion of the addition located here is a new stage that'll be next to the existing cafeteria and creating a new gymnasium to support the program. In the back here, we have a loading dock area with your receiving area adjacent to the new kitchen, which will be renovated and expanded. The section of the building here is a two-story classroom addition. The lower level will have second and third grade, and the upper level will have fourth and fifth grade, supported by small group instruction areas, a large group instruction areas to support those grade levels. In the main entrance area here, I'm gonna call your attention here to a large group instruction area, which is, actually serves as circulation from the first to the second floor and as a learning stair. And I'll show you a picture of that in a second. The second floor is a repeat of the first floor. It's gonna serve fourth and fifth grades with the large group instruction in the metal and some support areas. This is a rendering of the main entrance going into the, at the main entrance lobby, and this is the learning stair. As I said before, it's circulation going up from the first to the second floor, but can also be used almost like an auditorium space where you can bring a couple of classrooms in there and have presentations in that area. This is a rendering of the large group instruction area on the second floor of the new addition. One of the things to note here, it's, it's an area where we can pull out a number of classrooms at one time to do project-based learning. Around the perimeter of the room, you'll see that we have the cubbies that are for the classrooms. We've taken them out into the corridor space or into the large group instruction space so that the entire classroom can be used for instruction and gain some additional square footage in that area. This is a rendering, a study model of the cafeteria. We're not changing the size of the space other than we're gonna be removing the stage in the back there to gain some additional table room for each of the lunch servings. And if you're familiar with the space at all, there's a, some cubbies that pull down the tables for the cafeteria. We're gonna open that up and have windows so you can actually see into the cafeteria from the hallway. This is a study model of a typical classroom in the existing wing to remain, main, that's in the primary wing. You can see we are retaining the cubbies in those areas. We're just gonna replace the cabinet work and sink. We have a seating bench along the window here, and then this is a teacher's desk that's built into the casework. New lighting, new windows, new finishes throughout. This is our study model of the classroom in the new wing of the building, the two-story wing. Again, new casework, the seating bench along the window, the teacher's desk, dry marker boards and other instructional materials in the classroom. If you were going down the corridor, the ramp going down towards the back of the building, this is a rendering of what that would look like. On the right side is the library, on the left side will be the gymnasium area. We're gonna be covering the existing tile that changes throughout the building due to the various additions that have been done to the building over the years and resurfacing that with either a plastic laminate that looks like wood, or we're gonna have some alternates with other materials to potentially save costs if the budgets come in higher than expected. A rendering of the new gym with the stage. This is gonna be our main multipurpose room for large group instruction and performances. An exterior view, if you're looking at from Penrose towards the building, on the right-hand side here is the existing construction. We're gonna be replacing all the windows and placing the roof. This is the expansion here of the administration area that we talked about, and you can see the two-story wing in the back. This is coming up closer to the main addition. One of the things that we were talking about as we went through this design process to provide equity between this school and PAF, the two larger elementary schools in the school district. One of the things that we're trying to do here is really transition from that one-story wing to the two-story wing, which creates this entrance element here, just like PAF has that rotunda. Now, we have an element that really defines that main entrance to the school. And again, another view, clearly identifying the main entrance with the canopy here for protection of the students in inclement weather. So as you go around the building, our main materials are gonna be replaced, we're gonna be matching the brick that exists now on the building, bringing in some metal panels and some glass to bring natural light into the building. This is a view from the bus drop-off in the back of the building. You can see the gym behind that. And then this is the back of the two-story classroom wing, again, trying to tie all those architectural elements around the building so the building always looked like it was meant to be. Okay. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Jamie. He's gonna go over the cost estimate from the design development drawings.
Either one. Good evening, Happy New Year. Good to be back in Quakertown for a presentation, and I've got three quick but informative slides on project costs. And I think everyone has them in front of them so you can see the numbers a little bit better, because I can't see them here and I can't see them too well here.
As you go through this, can you do me a favor? Every time you get to the grand total, you attempt to explain why it's different on every page?
I can attempt to do that.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes. So I have it here on my phone and I'll use it that way. So the first project slide is, is an update of the completed design development cost estimate for the project. And I wanted to break it down into the typical three categories for you. So you'd see construction cost, which is obviously the building, soft costs, which are all the direct costs that you're paying for directly, non-construction related. So for instance, architect fees, CM fees, cost of permits, a playground that you'll probably buy on state contract, the equipment that goes in, utility connection fees, the hazardous abatement consultant who's working for you, all of those things that are non-direct construction costs. And the final is the level of contingency that's appropriate for this stage of the project. So the grand total, if I go right to that, $29,353 and change is slightly lower than the $29.9 that we reported to you at the end of the schematic design estimate. And as I break it down in component parts, in the first phase for construction, we have new construction that's roughly $10 million. We've got renovation construction for the general contractor, the site construction costs, and then the mechanical, electrical, plumbing and abatement costs. And also what we've included at this stage for contractor material allowances that is included in the construction project at an appropriate time here at design development.
What kind of abatement do you expect?
So right now, we have two rooms that has tile in it that needs to be removed. There's also, yes, there's also transite panels in the building, and I would anticipate that at some point, you've done previous abatement in the building, but at some point behind a concealed wall, we're liable to find an asbestos fitting or two, which are allowed to be in the school building. They're part of the AHRRA program, but the consultant has gone through, and we have two floors plus some transite panels to take care of. And we already have a cost estimate to perform that work. We do it when the kids are not in school, presumably over this coming spring break to get that work out of the way. Soft costs, I can provide the detail. I provided our, our cost estimate over to the admin team. And then contingencies. And just running through them briefly, we have a construction contingency at this point that I'd like to hold right through bid day at $1 million. We have a structural support contingency because there are details that need to be added to the drawings to support various components in the existing building while we renovate, and those details are coming together now. We have an allowance for soft soils on the site. I've heard somewhere that there's wet soils here in Quakertown. The same is true over at Nightig. So we're gonna do some additional testing on the site and identify where those may exist and where we'd wanna replace them with stone during the course of construction. So we've created an allowance for that.
I would look for baseball fields. That's where you find the water.
The superintendent of schools has kept me keenly aware of where soils are needed elsewhere in the district along those lines. Export, export, export fill contingency along the same lines. The civil engineer has helped us greatly by doing what we call a cut-fill analysis to understand what the balance is of soils on the site as we go through construction. We have an excess of soils here, and so we have to remove soils from the site. So that's kind of a two-pronged process. First, I have to put it in trucks and I have to take it to another permitted site, which obviously carries a cost with it. Second-
What are the chances we could dump it on the ball field and raise it up?
Has been raised numerous times by the superintendent of schools, and we're keenly aware. Both sites need to be permitted.
Dump the fill-
It'd be free.
Dump the fill to the ball field?
We'll give it to you for free.
Right.
We won't even charge.
We just have to make sure that the soils are good, appropriate for the purpose. Understood. The second part, which is something that has really plagued projects over the past two years, is making sure that fill can achieve what's known as a clean fill certificate under the state's management of fill policy. So we'd like to do some additional testing to understand what the constituents are of the soil, get that clean, clean fill certificate so that we could take this export fill contingency that I'm carrying at $360,000 and lower it by the time we get to bid day. So those types of things for the soft soils, the export of fill, they will ultimately be included in the bid. They call me the cost creep because I'm the guy who raises these ideas and says, hey, we better carry some contingency now, do some additional work, do some additional testing. And once we've satisfied ourselves that we have good fill, or we don't have wet soils, or we don't have some other issue with the site, then we'll lower the contingency. The idea is to worry about it now, not after bid day in the form of a change order. The last one is a concern that I have overall for the project, and it's an inflation contingency. We've carried this all along, but here in the new year, I just wanna give you an update that we're about to, or we are in the middle of, one of the busiest construction periods that we've seen in our economy in recent years. I can tell you that there are at least a dozen school projects in southeastern Pennsylvania bidding between the first of January and the first of June. So what does that mean? That means, first of all, lots of people are busy, right? You rub the fingers together. Yeah. You wonder about cost. First, folks are busy now, okay? Second, with more work, you know, coming in and being out for bid, the big concern is who's left to bid it? So it's the availability of the prime contractors. That's the first concern. And then, of course, the lesser subs. So yes, could it have an impact on, on cost? Yes. My concern is making sure that we attract excellent bidders to the project. The first and probably best thing that the district did to help itself in that manner was to take the kids and move them because we're working on a building that no longer has kids in it and is no longer an occupied renovation. That's attractive to contractors. So we've already started doing our due diligence. Both Schrader Group and I are reaching out to the contractors that I think we know and love to work with. If, if you can love to work with many contractors to bring some of the best to Quakertown and get them pumped for this project, to know that they've got an excellent owner, they've got an excellent design team and CM, and we're ready to bring it to bear and provide them with a good set of documents that's gonna be easy to bid. That makes it better for everyone, and it mitigates to the effect, to the, to the extent that we can, what's happening in the market. We wanna draw the very best to Quakertown to bid your job.
I'm not sure you're gonna be wary of contractors who are working multiple projects only because ours is so time-sensitive.
I could, I'm sure that David, Danny and I could go to another school district and talk about their project, and they'll also talk about the time-sensitive nature of their project and the challenges of their project. The reality is, is none of the school district projects that we do are easy. They're not slam dunks. We have challenges on, on all of them. This is one that sets up very well. First of all and foremost, it's not an occupied building, and that is gonna draw the contractors to the project. You know, second of all, we're doing our very best. We're going at it. Your admin team knows very well what happens in the design meetings when we talk about some of the nitty-gritty behind what happens and what we can do to make it easy, what we can do to make it attractive, what we can do to make it fast, so our 15-month timeframe can come to fruition. We've also, incidentally, been working with our other stakeholders, which is really the community, Quakertown Borough and the work that they do, not only from code enforcement, but also in this case from a utility standpoint. And one of the greatest challenges that we have to getting out of the gate quickly is to successfully negotiate the connection of new utilities with Quakertown Borough to Nightig. We need power, temporary power, almost immediately. We need gas, we need water, we need a connection to sanitary. And I'm pleased to say that the meetings have been held with Boucher and James and the Borough and, and your team here, and the Borough is on board, and they've been ready to help, and they've been very cooperative in the process. So it's been a very good effort to do all of this that I've been talking about of showing the project, making it as easy as it possibly can be. Okay? That's slide number one. That's slide number one. If we go to the next. What I wanted to share with you here, and I'm sorry for the audience that can't read it all, is...
We can expand it out, so you just do the top first, and then the middle and the bottom?
Let's see how he does.
Oh, he can do anything.
So I wanted to share with you from schematic design to design development. I think you've seen me stand up here before and say, we've taken a lot away in the form of the reduction in the gym size, in the reduction of the classroom addition, but we've also added. You've heard me talk about an additional stormwater basin, some utility work. And I wanted to provide you a summary, so from a cost perspective, you could see what we took away and what we added. And the big items up top were cost reductions since schematic design. And you know the big ones there. One is we relocated the students, and we got a big savings there. Two is we reduced the classroom and the gym and got a big savings there. And three, our actual anticipated abatement cost amount actually went down significantly. So the sum total of those reductions, and this is order of magnitude, $1.7 million. If we go to the next column, it's a list of the specific additions to the project since schematic design. They're listed there, and they also include those contingencies that I've included in the project for the soft soils, for the export fill. At the same time, we have the underground detention basin, which I mentioned. We've increased the kitchen equipment cost and really what we're doing in the kitchen. And this is a benefit to the project because we have a full-service operating kitchen that'll now be in Nightig, where that was really not possible in, by renovating the school with students in it. So our kitchen has expanded so that we have a full-service kitchen in Nightig as, really as a result of relocating the students. There are several other items, they're rather small in nature, that have been added to the project, but I wanted to give you some idea of saying, while we're saving 1.7, we're also tacking on 1.5 million, and our net cost reductions there is about $220,000. And our overall savings on, from schematic design to design development, is on the order of $640,000 in savings. So it's a little more savings than we had as far as add. This process is continuous. If we could update this on an hour-by-hour basis, I could tell you things about the good work that we've done together in looking at the wainscoting that Danny mentioned that are, that's in the hallways, and validating between my team and the design team what the cost would be, what the materials would be. And just this week, we picked up another $130,000 in savings that way. So that's tacked on. We've been talking with the Borough about the cost of permitting on the job, and they've been very cooperative with us in that vein, such that we do believe that there's going to be a permit savings on the job.
I got the commitment this afternoon.
Did you?
Yes, I did.
All right, that's good to know.
So it's going to, we never, we started the high school project, I'll say, before I was here, and the permitting was all ahead of time. And Jamie, through his experience of doing this, shared with us about normally it's a cost, we were paying the standard rate for permitting fees with the Borough, and we did that for the high school project, which is significantly, or at least double the cost. So the Borough said they're going to just charge us that cost, which is what they're supposed to have done before, but they're doing it now. So instead of, I think in your production, projection, it's 350,000?
That's right.
350,000. I expect it to be about, no more than half of that. So that, and that was from a, multiple conversations between Sam Warshower and the Borough's lawyer and cups of coffee with Scott McElroy.
And it speaks to the cooperative effort that we try to instill on the project. You know, that doesn't go without saying that the Borough would not do proper code inspections, et cetera. We just give them the opportunity. We show them through the meetings that we've had, through the design that's being put together, through the cooperation with the Wassmers and all of the things that we've been doing. First of all, we mean business, and that we have a quality set of documents, and that this is going to be an overall benefit to the community. And out of that comes something like this. And it's very good. Dr. Harner, I give him two things to do. One is to negotiate the permitting, and the second is just to take care of the weather during construction. That's it. It's two, two simple things.
Well, in the summertime, you will not have snow days.
All right, that's a start. That's a start.
Jamie, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
You've mentioned about Quakertown Borough and, you know, the ease of working with them with permitting and so forth. You've not mentioned Richland, and part of the project is in Richland Township. Has it gone as well there as it has with the Borough? Or is there not that much with Richland?
Well, and the admin team can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think early on, through the proactive effort in understanding that the site is actually in two townships, between Richland and Quakertown Borough, Quakertown Borough took on the yoke of the code enforcement for this project.
And, and the supervisors, Mr. Stepanoff, had the supervisors, Richland Township, pass a resolution that passed everything off to...
Okay.
That they would approve everything that the Borough would approve.
Great, thank you. Sorry.
So that, that's gone very well. So, second slide, 29,353. Sorry, I don't have the other dollars on it. You said that the total was different.
It's minimal. I just, when you're using computers, it's so easy to get the exact figure.
These are two different stages, right?
No, no, on the, on the first slide, I have 29,353 and change.
9:05, 24.
Thank you very much. And I missed it, and the total that's listed here.
I'm freaking out over here. We lost $905. What are we doing?
All right.
That was the savings.
When you have computers, I'm used to being able to see the exact same number. When it's not the same, I wonder why.
I appreciate it. It's my, it's my error on the slide and not showing it. And so let's see what the next slide holds.
And I'm concerned about missing those two decimal places at the, you know, it's important to see and 24 cents.
We want to move decimals, right? We want to move decimals.
Yeah, like remove them.
Okay, great. So you may recall this slide from our last presentation in order to provide a little bit of project history and overall cost. And we talked about where we were at the facility assessment stage back in 2016, through to schematic design, that was in 2018. The last time you saw this slide, the design development, the far-right column was blank, and now that's filled in. So in short order, our square footage has gone down from 87,000 to just over 84,000 square feet. The cost of the building has gone down from 21.3 million to roughly 20.8 million dollars. The cost of the site work has gone up as we identified with the added utility work, the added underground basin work. So that makes sense to me, and that we're still holding firm on a soft cost total that has gone down, but still contains all those contingencies that I showed you on the first slide. For that total, 29,353, 9:05, is that right? Okay, okay. So, you know, where we are at this point is we've got a reduction in square footage. We have a list of alternates that have been identified that we can share through the facilities committee for the bidding. We've been vetting them over the past several weeks. We don't have a giant silver bullet bid alternate where $4 million would come off of the project cost. We have some very value-added alternates with respect to finishes, the dormers that are on the roof, and a couple of other items. But we'll, we'll get them to you through facilities so that you understand them, so on bid day, you'll understand a little bit more about what, what they are. But we've got a building that's wonderfully designed, that has all-new mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems in it, that I believe, based on all the feedback I've gotten from staff, is really on par with what we, what you have over at PAF. I won't dare say that it's a little bit better, but maybe you'll catch me in a bad moment, and I will. And we're marching toward a bid day, an advertisement date that's late in, in March. We've got construction documents to put together yet, and the design team is getting into the dirty details in the building and trying to wrap this up. So you'll see one more cost estimate from me, adjustment right before, probably right before bids come in, because we have a lot of work to do in that timeframe, but we'll be keeping a sharp eye on where the cost is.
You mentioned all new systems, mechanical systems. Can we expect a slight savings in energy costs for that building going forward? You're adding space, so maybe not.
Right, so you're, you're, that's exactly right, Danny. You're adding air conditioning to the building. Okay, so that's the, you know, that's a great question, because in one, in one side, the answer is yes, because the efficiency of the systems that you're putting in. So we're putting a variable air volume HVAC system in. So that's a forced air system where air comes from a central unit supplied to the classroom, and you have a reheat coil that sits above the classroom ceiling. So this is one of the most energy-efficient forced air systems that you can put in a school, as opposed to the unit ventilators that are in the system now, which I'm sure the teachers love, because they spit out air on one side of the classroom, and it's warm over on the window wall, and it's freezing cold at the other wall, and vice versa, perhaps in the summertime. They're noisy, they're, they're energy hogs. So you've got a very good, highly efficient HVAC system that has gone in, again, as a result of being able to relocate the students. We would not have been able to put VAV in had we not been able to relocate the students. So that's the trade-off in order to achieve the parity.
Can we make sure we have something in the contract documents regarding the systems? Because we had this problem with Strayer, fairly new building, that suddenly we had to send somebody back out to fix the mechanical problems because portions of the building were at seriously different temperatures, and everybody was complaining.
Doesn't that happen in every building?
Well, you have, you have individuals who are never comfortable, that's a given, but I'm talking, apparently there were significant differences in atmospheric temperature throughout the building, and I just want to make sure we're going to be able to cover ourselves if the system isn't functioning the way the people who installed it swear it's going to be perfect. I want to make sure we hold them to the fire and get them responsible if it doesn't.
Understood. Excellent, excellent concern. We'll go through the motions when we're in the building, you know, before the contractor leaves with respect to the startup of the system, the manufacturer's reps for each of the pieces of equipment. We contract on your behalf with a separate third-party air balancing company, for instance. We don't let the contractor do the air balancing in the building. We have a third party do it. So I think we have a pretty good system. We've worked with Schrader before in this capacity where we have a good checks and balance, so we don't have fox watch in the hen house in that regard. And you can continue to ask me how we're doing it every step of the way. I know Danny's going to talk to you a little bit more about Act 34, but I want to be able to address any concerns that you have on the cost front.
Yeah, I just had one point, and then on the Monday meeting, you had, went into detail, like the bi-weekly meetings and the input from the people that are working in the building and how it'll help with the construction and keeping it all on point as far as minimizing possible change orders because of the way the setup was. Could you just expand on that a little bit?
Well, as you know, we've been doing bi-weekly design phase meetings, and Schrader Group, myself, Rob, the entire admin team is usually at, at those meetings. And we usually have a pretty, pretty long agenda of items that we go through. And Danny likes it that I make the meetings a little longer than they probably need to be by bringing up, by bringing up issues, by bringing up issues that commonly result in change orders. And we've been very successful in knocking some of those down as we go. And the effort to create allowances in the project so that if another data outlet needs to be added, we can do it on the fly without having to stop the work, without having to go and get a change order, that's important. By creating unit prices and bidding them competitively, we don't have to worry too much more about what the price of work is going to be should it come up during construction. So the, the effort is there to mitigate the common things that happen, the nagging things. I will be before you at some point, I promise, during construction, saying I need a change order for something. We hope to keep it within industry standards or below industry standards, which has really been our history on projects like this. But we're working very hard on a lot of the details to make sure that the silly ones aren't the ones that I'm standing here having to talk to you about. That answer your question?
The bi-weekly meetings have been phenomenal for, from our, from my perspective. Zach, Rob, Kelly before Rob, our good, fine principal there who's running a building, plus trying to build the future of the, the building. Also, the former principal to Hackett Valley, getting ready to move into another building.
Well, back home, right?
Yeah, it's just, it's just been an incredible process. I've asked Gary to sit on these meetings as, as our note-taker, so we have consistency of flow of thoughts. Danny writes up the summary within 24 hours usually, of everyone's comments and agreements and things. It's, it's, it's going step by step, and I, and I think you would feel very comfortable. As they are having these discussions on minutia about, about the ebb and flow of the dollars and cents being added and taken away, I think, as, as Jamie used, last week's Thursday meeting that I attended, in the beginning, the decisions make the, the cost of the project kind of like this, and now we're getting down to this where it's going to come in to, with a lot, a lot more precision, so.
Still time to get it to that 20 million number?
I'm sorry, was your mic on?
Have you gotten, during these meetings, like, feedback from the, the teachers and things like that? Have you seen, have they seen the 3D models?
Several end-user meetings, as they're calling them, and that's when we get together with teachers, we get them at every grade level, getting their input on the inventory, classroom layout, and another round is coming up for the interior design as far as colors.
Hey, Doc Kelly even has an office there, don't you?
An advocate for schools like Algea.
When you're talking about that, Mr. Gotchow, when you're talking about the end-user meetings, as you describe it, I want to bring up the one thing that concerned me when we saw this layout that still concerns me, and I want to make sure, I know you're on top of it, but I want to reiterate it. The parent drop-off concerns me still, because you're wrapping them around past the front of the building and telling them to go around that loop and then come back. And you know there's going to be a dozen families every day whose kids jump out that side door when they're not close to the building and run right through traffic. I'm just saying, I, I know you, we've expressed that before. I'm hoping that's something that you're thinking about and trying to find a way to prevent.
And thank you for that concern. It is, it is a concern. One of the points I keep coming back to with that is that if they are coming in, getting in that queue line and get to jump out, that car can't go anywhere. They have to go through that turnaround, they have to come up where the drop-off is supposed to be, and that's where I would be sleeping with them. But yeah, that is something we will have to make very, very quick.
You'll be handing out detentions to the parents, right?
I have to check board policy.
Quick question, Mr. Gotchow. On the end-user meetings, what has the reception been like so far?
Unbounded joy and excitement.
Truly?
The teachers love, like, you know, as it is, we're very excited to have this 21st century environment, and when we're looking at those different options for flexible spaces, communicating critically in different settings, really, really excited about it. Now that we're having different renderings come up from the architect, teachers are beginning to really see and feel how this is going to, you know, a wonderful school and add to it.
Great, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
So at the, at the United Friends School, we were poor, and the kids would often paint, paint stuff, so that's my recommendation for the wainscoting, is you can, like, have people paint on little murals.
It's called child labor, John.
It is, and it doesn't always come out so good, but you could do fun little stuff, who knows? It's cheap, yeah. Tasty cakes.
No custom colors, guys. 9.8 million to go.
Okay, then. I'd like to reiterate, though, that it's really been a team effort, and we've gotten such cooperation, like Jamie said, with the township. We just had a code meet with them last week. Everything went really well. I can't, I've been trying to think of a time when I've been at this stage of a process and already have our land development approval. It's just, never happens like that. So we were shock and awe when we went to the Borough meeting, so that was, that was really fun. really fun due to, it's been a good project overall. I can't read this from here, so I'm just going to explain why we're here tonight, to formally advance the Act 34 hearing. If any of you have been through a PlanCon project before, you may have been through an Act 34 hearing. And although we don't, we're not going for reimbursement for this project because of the moratorium that's been imposed on projects, for construction projects, we still need to do the Act 34 hearing because the building additions exceed 20% of the existing building footprint. So for any new or major additions to a building, you need to do an Act 34 hearing. So the Act 34 hearing is a public hearing where we present the information on the project and go through the descriptions that we talked about tonight. We talk about the process you took to get here, going through the district-wide facility study that Schrader Group did in 2016, the options that were reviewed, how you came to the resolution to move forward with Nightig. We talk about the project like I just talked about it tonight, and then we go through the costs that are derivative of the PlanCon forms. Now, part of the things that we sent you tonight on your board docs is the booklet that goes along with the Act 34 hearing. And there's a series of forms in there that are the PlanCon forms that is how we derive the two numbers that you're going to vote on tonight. So if you could proceed with this. If you look on the DO2 and the DO3 forms, one of the, the numbers that you can present tonight is the total project cost. And that's made up of the structure costs, the architect's fees associated with the construction of the project, mobile fixtures and equipment, the site costs, any additional construction-related costs, and the financing costs. So when you see that number is now over 30 million, it's including financing, which is not in Jamie's numbers. So that's the difference of that number. Next slide. The other number you're going to be approving is, Act 34 is just specific to new construction. This number is specific just to new construction. So it's looking at the structure costs less the site-related costs in the cost estimate that comes up with the Act 34 maximum building construction cost at $15,560,042. So those are the two numbers that you're going to be approving. The booklet that we shared with you on your board docs talks about, this is just the introduction to it. The hearing's going to be held on February 11th at 6 o'clock in this room. It needs to be advertised 20 days in advance of the Act 34 hearing. It'll be opened up by Mr. Klein, just to, to welcome the group. The solicitor will duly constitute the hearing. Dr. Harner will say a few words about the process and the excitement about the project. David Schrader will go through the project parameters, talk about the information associated with the design, and go through the costs. Jamie Doyle will be here to talk about the financing of the project. And then we'll open it up to public comment. Typically, you get the three minutes for public comment, you must listen to all the public's comments, you can't stop the meeting until everybody's been heard, and then the meeting will be adjourned. There's no voting at the meeting, it's simply for the board to hear the public's interest in the project or concerns. We don't need to answer any questions, but you are certainly welcome to if you need to, or we could address it after the fact. If you can go back, yeah, go back, you went way too fast. So, in the resolution for tonight, the board will be acting on approving the Act 34 maximum building construction cost at that number, and the total proches, total project cost like I just explained. And with that board vote, then it'll be advertised in the next couple of days. Like I said, it needs to be advertised for 20 days prior to the hearing. And then there's 30 days for the public to comment on the hearing after it's been had. Any questions?
You had mentioned, forgive me, you had mentioned that there was a moratorium on the reimbursement, half the costs. When was that moratorium put in place?
2011, and then it was lifted for a little while, and then they reinstated it.
What, what years could you remember that that was reinstated? I'm interested, please, as best you can.
It was a short one-year period.
Yeah, I'm thinking like 14, 15, something like that.
Like when you guys thought about closing the school, because half of it was going to be paid for, maybe right around there, you guys? I'm, I'm looking for some rationale here.
We did get a check from the PlanCon fund during the, when it reopened, didn't we?
Yes. So they reimbursed you for improvements that you did while there was a moratorium?
On one of your other.
Well, you're talking about the high school, this is, you're, you're talking about the high school, that was before anybody on this board even existed.
They stalled all funding, weren't receiving any funding. Up the gates again, hard to receive some money.
I think, isn't PlanCon somewhere around 350, $300 million a year for the entire state? And if you think that one-third of the BEF for the state goes to Philadelphia, so one-third of PlanCon goes to Philadelphia, although I don't know how much construction they're doing, because they have so many empty buildings. But we did, we received different chunks of money, I think we've received probably three or four payments on PlanCon since I've been here.
But it wouldn't amount to half.
Oh, oh, not, oh, not even close, we're just talking about at most a couple million dollars at, at most.
And it only goes against your debt service, it's not like you get a check for cash if it gets applied. Josh, I think you guys are in the 10 to 15 percent rate of projects? Yeah, I believe so. That's, that's the maximum you would receive.
In, in doing the, the Act 34 meeting, it's part of the, we have to. Does it benefit us, are we, are we going to go through the whole PlanCon process, just because, does it benefit us to do that even though it's, I mean, it's in a moratorium now, who knows when it comes and goes, is there any reason to go through the motions?
No, you missed that window already.
They, they are turning the paperwork around and sending it back to you. So we do have the paperwork in place in our office. If, if they come back and say retroactively, they could start the process again.
But they're not even accepting it.
Correct. Many schools have also had the same idea, let's do the PlanCon AV and send it in so that they have it and we get it back now. They used to actually hold it and do nothing with it, now it just comes right back. I saw the dress stamped up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things I'd like before we move on to, sir, May 6th, if we need to have at least five board members here for the bid, May 6th, correct? When the, the bids are due on April 30th, they talked about the announcement going out in March, the, the bids are due on April 30th, we have to open the bids, they have to be approved by the board on May 6th. So we do not have a, the second week board meeting of the month is too late. So, and, and I, and do we have a board meeting that second week? But May 6th, we need at least five board members for that meeting.
The day the bids come in, bids have to be put together and it'll come out to you. So you'll see numbers.
May 6th is on Monday?
Yes, sir.
What time?
6 o'clock.
There's a finance committee meeting tonight.
Then they get right to work and, and you know, we're moving them right out of Nightig over to Hackett Valley as soon as the school.
You rough out.
Sorry. So you rough out numbers that of course any bidder will see because this is all public. Do you work with, I mean, are you getting pre-bids, are you getting, like, just how's the process work? It's obviously not sight unseen, it's, it's you're not putting random $30 million for a $60 million project, or $30 million for a $10 million project. So we're not like going low bidder, or, like, how's, you can tell me, you'll talk to me afterwards if you want to explain the process, but.
Well, very simply, you have a mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and general contract.
Sir, would you please talk in the mic so they could saw on the video?
I'm sorry. So there's a mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and general contract. And there is a bid package for each of those that goes out. It all goes out at the same time. I hold a pre-con, a pre-bid meeting, probably at Nightig, and we'll show all of the bidders, they'll all be welcome to come in, we'll show them the building, we'll show them the plans, we'll explain to them that we want it done in 13 and a half months at $9 million below the budget, et cetera, et cetera, you know? And bids will all be due on the same day from all of those prime contractors. By state law, you are required to take the lowest responsive bid in each contract. And so we'll tabulate that. And then, in addition to their base bid number, there will be bid alternates that you will get to select. So, so very, one that's very easy, the dormer that lets the light in over the LGI on the new classroom wing, that's a bid alternate. And you'll see the cost with that and without it. And you can make a determination based on cost, if you want it or don't want it. And we'll go through each of those alternates on the evening that we have the bid meeting. We'll make a recommendation, the design team and myself and admin will probably come to you with a recommendation of why it makes sense to include it or not include it, and you can make a decision for yourselves. And then at the end of that evening, you'll know exactly what the cost is of the total project. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it's different than the DOD-type bid and proposal work that I did.
There's no desoping, there's no negotiating with subcontractors, you know, unfortunately, I've got one contract for each of those primes, if he's lowest and, and responsive, and if you have a bond and you have done any public work in the state of Pennsylvania, the courts pretty much have determined that you are responsive. So there needs to be some very significant weighty events in your past to be disqualified as a bidder. So that's why it's important for us to do our contractor outreach, you know, get folks to come to the project to be interested in another job with Dewey and Schrader in Quaker Town that they know is going to be handled well. Jamie, if.
It was terrible work for you before, but they held a bond. You would have to take them if they're the lowest bid?
Yes, sir.
Well, it depends how serious it is, because.
Is there anything that we're able to do?
Go private.
Being responsive, the bidder has to be responsible there. So it has to be responsive to the specifications, and the bidder has to be responsible. I can respond to the bid, but I have no way I can build a building, so it's a two-pronged text. So you can review someone's work history, whether they've ever been to Bard, you can do a lot of different things, but you should understand however that generally speaking, the lowest bid, if they're responsive, unless there's a history of issues, is required to be awarded the bid. You have the ability to consider other factors as to whether they're capable of doing the work.
Thank you, Mr. Garten, and that's a very good point, because if there is any question, we would work directly with the solicitor on how the recommendation would come out. The other thing that we do in the bid documents is we identify the, you know, more succinctly the minimum specification of the bidder. As an example, I want my general contractor to have done a project that resembles a school in a value that resembles the Nightig project sometime in his past. The other thing is, it's very rare that we're getting contractors bidding on projects who have not done a school project before. You know, there aren't a lot of people that are just running around, I think I'll bid a multi-prime renovation school project for a school board.
Even though I've only ever done roads or bridges.
Well, I mean, that could be, that can be a disqualifying fact. I mean, if the person has no, no history of doing a project of this scope, that literally can be a disqualifying fact.
Okay, so you're able to pack the spec a little bit to try to winnow out the possibilities of loser bids.
The qualification criteria is within the bid specifications. And, and it, you know, it's meant, it's meant to identify for the folks who think that this is going to be their school for, their first school project, that this is not the one that we would like to necessarily see them on.
I think kids nowadays call them noobs. Stop trying to be cool, Mr. Akman.
It stopped a long time ago.
Okay.
While, since we have you here in this moment, this topic, would you like to vote on this until we have it still center focused? We have the motion there.
Number 10, the facilities agenda.
It is on the agenda?
It's on the, number 10.
Okay. You're talking about voting on that separately now?
Yes, sir. Just pulling that out and voting on it right now, so.
What, so they can leave?
I think they're having too much fun here, I mean, that's.
$30 million, they can hang out a little bit.
For the record, this has been the longest superintendent report I've ever been a part of.
It's all my fault, sir.
I've seen longer.
Oh.
Sorry, sir. Okay, the facilities agenda. I'm sorry? Fiscal. So that would be the, the approval of the Act 4, Act 34, that's what we're voting on, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Should we ask for public comment before the vote?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So what we're going to do is we're going to move up the facilities agenda vote now. So prior to that, is there any public comment? Mr. Spear. I stated your name, just state your area of residence.
Milford Township.
Thank you.
Just a real quick point to Mr. Jackson's comment before about the utilities. Quaker Town Borough electricity is 25% higher than standard PPNL electricity. Is that an option, that you could put the interconnect into the electric from the Richland Township side to save 25% on, on future electric costs?
Do it after we get the free permits.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's, it's a decent question, and certainly one, like, I would love to say, hey, that's a great idea, let's do it, but I fear, and, you know, Dr. Harner has the ear of the borough, so to speak, but I fear that they're doing a lot for us to get this thing pushed through. I don't think they'd be too happy if we went in that direction. I'm not saying, it's, it's not a bad suggestion, and we can, as, we can discuss that at a different time, but it's, it's a fair point.
But yeah, I mean, you would need to have that interconnection, that would all have to be done ahead of anything else. And the other thing, what you were saying about the issues you had with Strayer and the, the mechanical problems you had not too long after the project was finished, was all with the building management system. And that, that's the key to knowing how that building management system, how support for that is handled, and whether, you know, support in the future and how far out that goes, and whether or not, you know, as that equipment becomes obsolete, you don't want to be in the position where it's obsolete three years after it's installed.
And that's why we're trusting Dewey to pick a good contractor and come up with a good design.
It, it's really the system, I mean, they're, they're kind of, you know, different companies handle those. So in some of those cases, you don't necessarily want to go with the cheapest, but maybe you're forced by law to go with the cheapest, so that's.
Well, we're not, we're not forced to specify the cheapest system in our, in our construction, but at the same time, again, we're trusting these guys to do its rights for our district.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Spear.
Cheapest would be winter coats and screens in the summer.
Any other public comment? Do I have a motion to approve the facilities agenda as presented, specifically the approval of Act 34 of the 1973 hearing on proposed construction Nightig Elementary School renovation and addition?
I'll motion for it.
Ms. Mitchell, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Anderson, discussion.
It's too expensive.
That's a comment. All, should this be a roll call vote?
Unless you hear more than one or two.
This is about the hearing, though, this is not about the.
So, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
You're free to go and do your homework.
The train can't, the route, what are you, what are you going to save?
Is there any public comment on the fiscal items? No? Okay. Moving on to the fiscal agenda, we have approval of the November 2018 Boucher and James bills. And do I have a motion to vote on the Boucher and James bill, bills from November of 2018 as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Anderson. I'm sorry, who seconded it? Oh, Mr. Akmanowicz.
Sorry, I did not wait long enough.
It's okay. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Abstention.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously with one abstention.
That's not unanimous either.
Okay.
Eyes are-
You knew what I meant.
Of course. Feisty.
It's my fault.
Moving on to the fiscal consent agenda. A is approval of October 2018, November 20, to November 2018 treasures report, approval of the November 2018 budget transfers, approved contract with Camp Nakamixon, approved contract with Blue Chip Sound for the 2019 commencement, approve user agreement with arbiter pay for arbiter pay payers. Okay? Approve November 2018 and December 2018 bills lists, approve Disney's destination youth and leisure food and beverage event agreement for the high school band trip to Disney's Epcot Italy, A Sola in Orlando, Florida, 2019, approve contract with Big Laughs photo booth for the high school senior prom. Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Jackson, do we have a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Akmanowicz. Discussions.
I want to go back to band.
Do board members get to go on these trips?
Chaparras, right?
There you go.
Just let us know.
We're sure you can tag. You had to kid your pants the whole way.
Okay.
That's not how-
I think we should, I think we should stick all nine of us in the Big Laughs photo booth.
Yeah, that would be ugly.
Awkward prom.
Okay.
Scary senior.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Ron. Okay. We already did the facilities agenda, so public comment on human resources items presented for a quote, for vote tonight. Seeing no hands raised, we'll move to the human resources consent agenda. A is administrative staff, B is professional staff, C is supervisory technology staff, D is support staff, E is unit pay, F is settlement agreement, G is reinstatement of a professional employee. We need a motion to do that. Do I have a motion to vote on the human resources consent agenda as presented?
Mr. President, may I make a motion that we pull item letter, item G to discuss that separately prior to this approval?
Yes, sir.
Need a second on that.
I second it.
Okay. Mr. Jackson made the motion, and Mr. McCucci seconded it. So what we'll do is vote on the, the human resources consent agenda less G, and then we'll get back to that.
Do we need, do we need to approve pulling it out?
You have to vote on that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, excuse me. All in favor of pulling letter G from the human consent, resource consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So now we're going to vote on the rest of the items in the human resource consent agenda. We've had a motion, or I need a motion to-
So I'm, I'm moved to vote on items-
Thank you.
-A to F in the human resources consent agenda.
Thank you, Mitch.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Discussion.
Sir, I'd like to make a comment. Rob, Christine is in that. His, my recommendation to the, to the board that he be our facilities director. I've known Rob now for five years. He is a leader, he's a manager, he, he's an expert in, in the field of facilities, and I couldn't, I don't think there's a better guy out there to do that. And I just wanted to make that comment before you vote.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And I just have to say, congratulations. Yeah, I wanted to say that.
Yep. Well deserved, sir.
Both, could, both of you stand now? Both of you stand? Missed out? Congratulations to them both, they just got married.
Wow.
Aww.
He can now afford her.
Oh.
Glad you said it.
I thought it was really cool hearing how long you'd been with Quaker Town and how you really, you know, rose up through the ranks. Such a neat story, so I'm really happy for you. Congratulations.
Okay, on to item G, which was pulled. Discussion.
Do you want to summarize item G for us again?
Item G, last December, that would be 2017, the district terminated a professional employee. That professional employee, through her bargaining unit, filed a grievance from that decision. An arbitration hearing was held before an arbitrator, who sustained the grievance in part and denied the grievance in part. However, the arbitrator reinstated that employee effective when the decision was rendered, however, did not award any back pay. So the decision for you tonight is whether you are going to reinstate that person consistent with the arbitrator's decision, or you intend to appeal that matter to the Court of Common Pleas of Bucks County.
So to be clear, we, I mean, to remind the public, because this was a public item, the, the action we took was public, so at least the name was made public. I'm not sure if the actions-
The name was public, yes, as was the name was made public.
Were the actions of the individual made public at all, at any time? Do you recall?
I don't recall that the board ever made those actions public, no.
The-
We had public comment from one parent, I believe.
Right. And, and she did describe in detail what happened.
And the arbitrator's decision is in board docs, I believe.
So what we're talking about here, just so the public realizes, that we, there was an individual whose actions the board felt were egregious enough to warrant our terminating her employment. And we took that action. However, an arbitrator decided that wasn't, I'm not sure how you, do you state their motivation, but they decided that the action didn't necessarily warrant termination and sided with the, the teacher, and the teacher has been reinstated in the decision of the court. So we have to decide if we want to accept that or further adjudicate it.
Well, it's not, it's not the court.
Okay.
The arbitrator is a, is selected through a state process. It's not a judicial decision. If you took an appeal, it would be the Court of Common Pleas of Bucks County, from that arbitrator's decision.
And in your professional opinion, the odds of winning such an, overturning such an opinion are, are what?
Well, I mean, I think some of the materials I provided you kind of laid out the law with respect to reversing an arbitrator's decision. And as I mentioned to you in executive session, it's unusual, the court will reverse an arbitrator's decision. Obviously, the choice is yours to test those waters. The consequences are obviously some attorney's fees, and also, if you remove this person pending that appeal, and they're reinstated, you would owe that person back pay without them having worked during that interim period. They're really the consequences, that's really the, the weighing you have to decide.
I, I know that several people have some really strong thoughts on this, including myself, but I don't want to be the first one to speak about it, so if anybody else has any opinions that they would like to share-
I'm completely disheartened by this. I think that the actions of, of, this one person doesn't represent the actions of our entire teaching force, which I have an utmost respect for. But these actions, and I've seen them in my own profession, I think they warrant termination. And I stand by my initial vote to terminate this employee. This is, it's unacceptable behavior at any level, let alone to the youngest and most vulnerable population, which are our children. And so, I, I feel that I'm completely and utterly baffled by the decision of the arbitrator, and I think it really stinks, but I know how I'll be voting.
Would anybody else like to comment?
Yeah, I thought there was a strong comment from the arbitrator in the, the documents that are out there, that said, the grievance has had and continues to have a lack of recognition that her dragging was inappropriate. So that's, that's a concern of mine, that there's not remorse and-
Right. I'm with you, I'm with you. I mean, I think I can find, manage to find sympathy in just about any situation, but it was really difficult for me to understand how someone could not feel remorse for, for something as egregious as this situation. So, that's all I'll say.
I have trouble not facing the accused, and to me, a lot of this is hard to know someone's heart. So that, that's one of my, you know, concerns, is I wouldn't know her from anyone. Kalen said something interesting. So back to just a pragmatic approach. What we would owe is, like, so if we said, "All right, go ahead and let's fight it," there'd be some attorney's fees, and then there'd be her salary.
Right. Attorney's fees would not-
And Kalen pointed out, well, we'd be paying her salary anyway.
Yes.
Salary would be retro, though.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be back-
No, just for now.
The arbitrator's decision, it would be subsequent to that.
Which is critical, yeah. So it wasn't for last year, it wouldn't be like last year's pay.
No.
So the interesting, the interesting thing is, all right, so we can roll the, yeah, we can roll the dice, right, if we want to-
Well, we're not getting the services in return. She's not working and we're paying her, whereas she would be working and we're paying her. I think that's what-
Yeah, but the year, the year started without her.
I'm just sort of laying out the elements.
Right, the year started without her, so it's not like, you actually probably had to plug her in and figure out what to do, because she wasn't here.
The majority of her day is subbing in classrooms where we don't have teachers.
Okay, so it's not like a critical component, per se. So-
Building subs, so to speak.
So I guess what I'm saying is, I'm just proposing that one way to think of it is, well, if, if we don't want her here, her salary is kind of her severance, so to speak, and we could go through with the, let's challenge it, see if we get a different opinion, and we're no, not that much worse for the wear of financially, possibly. And maybe you, you can balance your mind out, knowing that she's not in, with students anymore.
How long do these decisions typically take?
I would think this would be done before the start of the next school year.
Okay.
It's something I want the, the board to consider. Mr. Kern used the phrase, you know, it, if we, if something like, if we, if we wanted the fire, or if we, if we didn't want, want her working, the board voted unanimously to terminate this contract. We don't want her teaching here. Unfortunately, our decision apparently didn't matter to the arbiter, because we were told to reinstate her. Now, he weighed the evidence and came upon this decision. But it flies in the face of what we wanted. Okay? We clearly wanted to terminate this person. We've been informed by the arbiter that we've lost that decision, and we were told to reinstate the individual. We've consulted with our league representative, who believes strongly that we'd lose on appeal. So the fact that we still do not want to employ this individual is irrelevant to the courts, to the state, essentially. So my point is, we can sit up here and say, all, you know, we can dumb our chest, and we, we all don't want the individual here. We don't. We don't have that choice anymore, sadly. That's my problem.
Well, I have a choice. I, I have a choice not to vote for her.
Correct, and I get you, but we're not, but if we-
I had no, I had no choice in the outcome of the-
Right. But if we choose to accept the arbitrator's decision, we're not voting for her.
So then why ask us to vote?
We have to, we, we kind of-
It shouldn't even be a vote.
Well, the purpose is, though, if we vote no, it will, we, we will vote then to appeal it. So there is a purpose.
Then when it gets appealed, and we, and it comes back to me, and I say no again.
But then, what you're doing that, basically, so we should-
My point is, my point is that it's, it's-
What you're doing is wasting our money on something we know we're not going to win.
No, 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 it's, it's money.
But you're, well, we're, we're spending the money and getting your, we're getting our wishes, at least for a little longer.
I don't want teachers of this caliber teaching my kids.
Right, so, so we're going to take a-
Yeah, but nobody on this board wants that, either.
We're going to take a financial hit to do the right thing.
I'm not telling you how to vote. You could vote however way you want. I, I agree.
Yeah, so we're, I, I view it as we're taking a financial hit that we're taking anyway, but we can get our way, and she won't be on premise. And at least for another, till the hearing happens, and maybe we win. Maybe we don't. And then, maybe something happens in between now and then, and maybe she retires. I don't know, who knows? But it, it's a delaying tactic, and it doesn't cost us much more than what it's going to cost us anyway.
I think for the public's record, it's an awful situation that, that we as board members are put in, right? That we have to vote on something. We reviewed the evidence upfront, months ago, and we all determined collectively, yeah, this is, this is egregious, to only have a court or an arbitrator say no, it's, you know, and now they're asking me to reverse my vote, when I've already made that claim months ago.
Right, but you're not, you're not reversing your vote. You're accepting the arbitrator's decision, because that's, that's what, i- i- is it what's best for the district? It's not what's best for the district, it's what we have. I, I, I mean, you don't say-
I'm just going to give my opinion briefly. I usually don't do this, but I feel very strongly about this, like you, Mr. McCucci. I voted to terminate this teacher, and this is one of those instances that I feel that I need to stand on principle, because what the teacher did to a child should never happen in a school, in my opinion. And I remember when the child's mother spoke here under public comment, and I remember how heart-wrenching it was to listen to her. So while I get it that it could cost the district a little bit more money here, there's also, even if it's the slimmest of chances, that we could win this on appeal, that's how I'm going to vote, because I, I cannot accept the arbitrator's decision. I just can't.
To help you focus, the appropriate motion, from what I'm hearing, would be to deny reinstatement in fact, to appeal the decision of the arbitrator. That would be the appropriate motion.
Separate votes are same.
You can do the same, on the same motion.
Okay.
Okay. And again, it, it allows us to keep her out of the school for however many months longer. It's a tactic.
So then we would need a motion to deny reinstatement and file an appeal?
Authorize filing an appeal with the Court of Common Pleas of Bucks County.
Thank you, what he said. So do I have that motion?
I make the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. McCucci, seconded by Ms. Mitchell.
Should I do a roll call?
Roll call.
Yeah, I was, I was going to suggest that.
Who seconded?
So is the, the, a yea vote is to appeal?
Yes, and it will require five of you to agree.
So a yea vote is to appeal and not reinstate?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Okay, I'm going to pass on discussion, because we've already discussed this. So, Madam Secretary, if you would proceed with the roll call vote, please.
The motion's to deny reinstatement and authorize filing an appeal with the Common Police Court of Pennsylvania.
Bucks County.
Bucks County, sorry. Thank you.
So just to be clear, if you vote yes, you're voting to not reinstate the teacher and to file the appeal.
Mr. Anderson?
I've been around this too much, but I think I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
Mr. De Liberto? Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
I reluctantly vote yes.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
I reluctantly vote yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Six yes, two no, one absent.
So the motion carries. Okay, moving on. Public comment on Office of Teaching and Learning items being presented for vote tonight.
I'll just feel better myself, Michelle Henry, Richland Township, if I finish saying what I was gonna say. So, I'm always gonna say with confidence that there's nothing more that I could have done. Can you say the same? There are people up here that have never looked me in the eye, that purposely look away. Can you look in the mirror and say that you did what you are sitting here? And did you make a student-centered decision? It would be so unfortunate for UCSD to lose a bright, talented student, but as her mom, I will encourage her to achieve her dreams. Mr. McCucci, you just said you're completely and utterly baffled by a decision. I'm completely and utterly baffled that you can't figure out a way, any way, to keep this student here in this district. I am completely and utterly baffled. You said, Mr. Klein, if there is someday interest in learning French, maybe you would consider it. Fifty-eight kids signed up to take French in March of this year. Fifty-eight kids. That is interest in French. And on May 31st, it got taken away. And what I can't understand is why the board isn't upset that the French was offered and kids signed up, and you didn't know about it, and then it got canceled, and you didn't know about it. Why aren't you upset about that? Fifty-eight kids, that's a lot of kids. That's, that's interest in French. And I feel like you're not thinking about that because when you said, "Maybe someday, if it seems like there's interest in French," and Julia looked at me and said, "But fifty-eight kids wanted to take French." What does he mean? Julia sent an email, I think it might have been on Monday, asking Dr. Harner and Dr. Hoffman and Ms. Edwards, "Could you please tell me how many kids signed up for strings?" And we don't want to end strings. Keep strings. But why won't anybody tell her? She sent a bunch of emails. Is it a secret? Is the number of kids that signed up for strings a secret?
No, I told her I would have the answer tonight, and I have not had a conversation with her yet tonight. The answer is well over forty right now enrolling strings with parents signing up every day.
Okay, because last I heard, it was less than twelve and zero at Richland.
Am I correct?
So, what we're saying is...
This isn't a competition between strings and French.
Exactly. But if that, if forty, if forty people, it seems like a lot to you. It sounds like you think forty people is a lot. Fifty-eight is even higher.
I think, I think so. For me, it's a very practical approach, and I think the problem is, and what I, what I see when, and the reason I supported not moving forward with French right now was simply a business decision in the sense of, we would need a long-term strategy to sustain a French education model at Quakertown. And I, and it's not, and as much as I, I feel like the sixty thousand for half FTE, but it's never that way. Having looked over FTEs in my normal job, there's always, you know, thirty-two percent factor, benefits, retirement, yada, yada, yada. So, and then it's not just today, it's what about tomorrow and into the future? And I think one of the things that concerns me, and I've been very vocally opposed to the strings program, is that there is no business model behind it. In other words, I don't know what the five-year financials are gonna look like. And it will tell you why I'm sitting here today, is because worse than not being able to have, teach my kids French, was that my kid's life was disrupted by moving them all over God's good earth when we decided to close the school. So while I empathize with you wholeheartedly, my, my thing was, my kid was losing kids he went to school with, the building he knew, where all my other kids were educated. I was crushed. So it's not that I'm disheartened by it, I'm just looking at it very practically, that if we, we can't, I don't know that we could fund it tomorrow or the next day.
I understand...
While it's a very small part of the budget, I think we, we've raked over that budget fifteen different ways last year, looking at seventy thousand dollar asks and twenty thousand dollar asks, and, I mean, everybody's coming, I mean, you know, look at the Facilities Committee, that we talk about, the band wants a thirty thousand dollar, everybody's looking at us, "Do you have a hundred and ten million dollars? And you mean to tell me you can't find thirty thousand dollars in there to put up a band tower?" And we're like, yeah, that's, that's pretty...
Yeah, because the bulk of that budget is spoken for in salaries with nothing we can do about it. There's a slice of about fifteen percent of non-salary stuff, and that includes things like paper and books and, so it's, it's a specious argument.
I understand what you're saying.
So say here and talk, it's one twentieth of one percent. So what? I'm sorry.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but then it shouldn't have been, it, it, how, I don't, it shouldn't have been offered in the first place.
Okay, so they made a mistake. Life, life is rough.
But don't, but then don't say...
They made a mistake.
Someday when there's interest in French. Because there was interest in French.
Okay, then maybe that was a mistake to say it.
And I just want you to walk away saying that, okay, there was interest in French. But, all we're asking is, please, is there some way to, you know, to figure out a way to ensure that she can stay here and take an online? She said, she came home today and said, "Dr. Harner said that they're gonna offer Mandarin online."
I think suffice to say that I would hope, as a board and as an administration, that
we evaluate what we're, programs we're offering, and if they're not being taken, that we will, we will substitute it with something that's hot. And I gotta imagine this changes from time to time. I don't know. You know, where a different language becomes popular today than tomorrow, and, so I, I think, you know, I would never ever want to throw it out. And if there is some way we could keep her, I think it would be awesome. I think she would be, have much more fun being with her friends here than taking French at another school. That said, I...
I think if she could take it online, I feel like, if we could take it online, so we could talk about that.
Dr. Hoffman's prepared to talk to you afterwards about that.
Okay. All right, so I just wanted to say, if you could please work with us to try to figure it out because her future is literally, literally in your hands right now.
Her future should not be in our hands.
What, what can I do?
Didn't let the government run your future. Just saying, it's a bad idea.
I shouldn't laugh at that. I just wanted to make one comment because I, I just want to...
Yeah, we are the government.
We are?
You will. Well, that's true, we're not. We're...
So, you know, I, I had been looking into and reading all the emails, and I responded to you at one point, and I talked to Dr. Hoffman about this because I truly wanted to understand it too, so I could look you in the face and be okay with this decision. So, from just my understanding, and I'm gonna summarize it quickly, is that there was never a teacher that was hired for this. It was put out there in an effort to see how many people would be interested in enrolling in it, and Dr. Hoffman mentioned that her numbers differ from the numbers you had, and there's no way to validate that because the person that had those different numbers are no longer here, right? So her numbers were much lower, and you had made a couple of suggestions about how we could incorporate the French, and I thought they were all good, and I asked those same questions. Now, the problem is, the person that we have that's certified for French, we could not, you mentioned, "Oh, well, why don't we do this cultural geography?" We don't have anybody to backfill her position. If we were to scoot her over, we would have no one to teach that, that position. We also, some of the other things that you mentioned, it just really couldn't work out from the standpoint that we would have no one to fill in. And then, getting a part-time French teacher apparently is impossible. That's what I'm just being told, is that it's really difficult to find a world language teacher who is certified, who is only willing to work part-time. And then additionally, you add on the fact of what Keith mentioned, from our perspective is too, once you, you offer it at one level, you really need to lay out a plan for offering that in the long term, and that could mean that we'd have to furlough a Spanish teacher because then, think about it, most, a lot of kids, maybe they might be interested in French instead of Spanish. So, there's a lot of moving parts, and I, I really like, you know, that you're passionate about this. I like that your daughter, who is very young, is willing to get up and be courageous and speak her mind. I just want to assure you, though, that we really did look at every single possible option, and I know Dr. Harner plans to speak to you afterwards about a possibility. I just want to assure you, we really did. I mean, we did look at this in every which way, and I apologize, it didn't work out the way that you had hoped.
Thank you. I just don't want you to keep saying, you know, at these freshman things, like, "We have everything, and we're gonna help you reach your dreams if you're not really gonna do that." So maybe what you're gonna say is gonna help her, but you can't keep saying that if you're not gonna actually do that, so...
You gotta be careful with that. I appreciate your, your passion right now, but if your daughter's dream is French, and another daughter's dream is, I mean, my daughter wants to ride horses.
Mm-hmm.
Should we...
Well, we're not gonna have horses in the building, like...
No, but you, that's my point.
Does every, all but three school districts in Bucks and Montgomery County have equestrian classes?
But your comment suggests that we need to worry about your daughter's dream. That's what your comment suggested.
No, my comment was that, and you know that every district in Bucks and Montgomery County offers French, except for three.
I do know that.
So, that's, you can't compare that, if, if every district in Bucks and Montgomery County had equestrian, that would make sense. But it's, that's apples to oranges.
Thank you, Mrs. Henry. Any more public comment regarding the policy? Which one are we on? I lost track.
Policy, uh, teaching and learning.
Teaching and learning, okay. All right. If not, we're gonna move on to item A, which is approval of planned course statements. The Office of, for Teaching and Learning is requesting approval for the following planned course statements to be added to the 2019-2020 Program of Studies, that is AP Physics, Electricity and Magnetism, and AP Physics Mechanics. Do I have a motion to vote on the Office of Teaching and Learning Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Akmanowicz and Mr. Anderson. Discussions?
Magnets are gonna change the world.
Watch.
If you guys look at the course, then you make sense what he said.
Okay. All in favor of approving the Office of Teaching and Learning Consent Agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we move to the public comment on policy and programs agenda for this evening. Okay, no public comments, so we move to the policy and programs agenda. We have revised 2018-19 school year calendar. The election day change in May is the reason for it. Do I have a motion to accept the policy and programs agenda as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Anderson, second?
Second.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
So what changed on it?
Discussion.
The election...
What are we doing to make sure all parents are aware of this change? Because, I mean, we have a problem now getting information to parents about basic things, and now we're changing a date on the calendar, so...
What do you mean, date? There's a day off for election day. They changed election day in May. They changed it.
Well, with, with your approval tonight, we'll start the communications out.
Yes, I was waiting...
The earlier the better.
Yeah, I was waiting for approval to, before, before we proceeded.
The earlier the better.
Yes.
This is the 21st.
Yes.
No, it can't be May 21st because it's supposed to be your primary. I thought they were moving the primary up in Pennsylvania, so it's...
That's, no, that's in two years.
That's in two years.
This is just...
Right, next year it's April 28th, but this year it's May 21st, which is not the date that was originally out there.
Okay, having received the motion and the second, all in favor of accepting the policy and programs consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Information items, there is the December SRO report on Board Docs, also the December 2018 EOM Enrollment Report, the Tech Ex, Tech Excellence Award for IT Innovation Congratulations Letter, the lead-in drinking water testing results. In accordance with the EPA National Primary Drinking Water Standard, Quakertown is within the EPA standard on our drinking water.
Correct, sir, and, and we were required to report it, report it out to the community annually?
Yeah, the new law says you're either required to test and report out, or not test and explain in a public meeting why you didn't. Well, this goes back to a prior facilities meeting. We got a good price in the end to do all the buildings, so we kinda changed our mind when we saw the price from this one company was one-third of what we thought it was gonna be. So we tested them all this year, and then we're gonna implement a three-year testing, yeah, practice there, so...
And I reported it out in my blog this evening to the community.
We, we do need to test TV still because at the time, we didn't know what we were doing with that, so Rob is actually scheduling that one still. So this is every other building in the district.
Okay.
What's the primary source of lead, if it's not like solder?
Replace the water floors and help them pass. Either in a fossil fuel or...
Okay, next on the information items is Mr. Finerty's presentation to rising ninth graders, transition and AP electives, and of course, the board briefing book, which is out on Board Docs. There are no communication items. Time for board comments. Is there any new business from anyone on the board?
I do want to bring to board a data on the issue of the compressor station in West Rockhill. Following the last board meeting, when Mr. Akmanowicz mentioned it, I contacted the West Rockhill Township Solicitor and expressed to her the interest in the district being supportive of the township and opposing the application. And she said, "Well, why are you involved? Why do you care?" I said, "It doesn't have anything to do with the district." I said, "Well, one of the more august members of the board said that there was a school relatively close," and she says, "Well, where?" So I said to her, "Send me a copy of the map showing where the compressor station is, and I'll let you know." So I didn't get anything, and I, I sent an email saying, "Where are the maps?" And I got the maps, I think, January 2nd. And sure enough, it's relatively close to Trump-Bowersville Elementary School.
Yes.
So she then has agreed to let us know when and what we should do in respect of supporting their efforts to prevent the compressor station from being approved and constructed. So, the ball is now on her court to let us know what she would like us to do.
I did send out to the board a copy of the letter we got from our legislatures.
Yeah. That's good to see.
So, I mean, they're already on board. I'm, I would think they have a little bit more weight than we do, but if, if the board wants to be proactive, by all means, somebody throw something on the table.
They really waited for a while, I think, until mounting pressure to say something, but I am happy to see that they are supportive.
Yeah, that, that they're so supportive, they, about five percent of what stats took in campaign donations came from fossil fuel companies.
I don't care. I just care that he makes the right decision.
Came from fossil fuel companies.
I mean, I care. Don't get me wrong, but...
Yeah, but those stats are often the same for every candidate because they're like bundled in other goofy things.
Get money out of politics.
I'll report back when I next hear from West Rockhill.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And Ron, I don't think they carry more weight than we do. I gained a lot over the holidays.
Yeah, I just had one item, a new business with, with everything that's going on with the students lately, as far as talks about vaping and some of the results that has happened and, and social media and sharing of videos. Is there any consideration on possibly, like, similar to what you're doing with the Safety Committee and Diversity Committee, almost doing a monthly panel discussion where you have like an administrator, the SRO, and possibly a guidance counselor in an open forum, kinda talking about a different topic each month, and parents and children can attend together, where they can say, "Here's an, an issue that students in our district are handled, or faced with. Here's different options you have as far as being able to handle them," and, and kinda open up discussions versus just not talking about it. Just, just an idea I had, and just everything I kinda... Just an idea I had and just everything kinda came to a head over the past couple of weeks. Whereas a lot of those topics in the news, so that was my question.
We have a lot of committees going on right now. We have the Diversity Committee, which meets again on Monday. Monday on the 17th, I think Ms. Edwards has the Safety Committee. We've had, back before the holiday, we had Ms. Pallone set up our county drug and alcohol person, whose video that I... We posted back out on the blog tonight to refresh everybody's memory. We can do a lot of that. I think once a month would be overkill, but I'd like to, let's have a conversation outside of this and refine the Board's guidance and we'll get her done, something like that. You know, the other districts have done, you know, Town Hall... I do Town Hall meetings, I've done them here, I've done them in other places. The frequency would be my only concern.
Maybe we could start quarterly and see if it gains any interest, you know?
Yeah, just seeing if there's something, just so these people are talking and almost being... Talking and almost being preventative versus...
I imagine we have something in the schools. I don't know, Doc, if you knew anything about it or Janet, we must have something going on at the schools already talking about the evils of vaping and all this stuff.
Yeah, but sometimes together with...
Right.
You know, if you're there with your kid and sometimes it's someone else besides you telling them. Just an idea.
Thank you.
I have two things. One, I'm unable to open the Board Briefing Book in this computer, I don't know why. And the second thing is, I was wondering if the Board would support administration finding out what it would cost to bring Rachel's Challenge to this district.
Can you define Rachel's Challenge?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if you could...
I sent you guys the emails with all the links in it, but it's a program, Ron and I sold at PSBA. It's about how kids deal with issues that are affecting them. And we're looking at these discipline issues on the email and stuff like that. It's, I don't know, it's described by the administrators as being life-changing for their students. I sent you the emails so you could take a look at those. They can explain it a lot better than I could, but I think it's something that could very possibly help us a lot in this district.
I think, given this input here, that when we have our winter retreat, we have that conversation about what you're after and then we'll bring you back some feedback on what we know about Rachel's Challenge and other things. I know they tried Rachel's Challenge over in Pen Ridge. And so we'd like to go to school on that before, you know, we move forward. But getting your input and what you'd like us to do. It's interesting, when I send out blogs, I rarely get feedback, even though I asked for it. And I've already gotten feedback from the one I sent out at five o'clock, five-thirty tonight from multiple parents about, mostly about my last couple paragraphs, about vaping and the incidents that happened at the high school.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yeah, if you could look into that, that would be great. Any other comments from Board members? I just have one very brief comment. And those of us of a certain age will probably appreciate the fact that this year is the 50th anniversary of Woodstock. Fifty years ago.
School trip?
I wanted to ask Dr. Harner if he could reminisce a little bit about it for us.
I'll bet he missed that show.
Anyway, that sure made me feel old.
Is that that little, that cartoon character bird?
Uh, no. Max Yasgier's farm in New York.
I was almost born in a Volkswagen bus, if that counts.
I was eight years old when that happened. And I tried to get my older brother to get me tickets for it. He was only twelve, so... Didn't work out. Okay, this brings us to the last public, general public comment of the evening. Okay. Moving on, we have calendar items. So we have on January 17th, at 6:00 PM, the Facilities Committee will meet in Community Room A. On January 24th, at 5:45, the Policy Committee will meet in Board Caucus Conference Room Number Three, and that's followed at 6:00 PM by the Finance Committee meeting in Community Room A. February 7th, at 6:00 PM, is the Facilities Committee meeting, again, Community Room A. We just voted on this tonight, but February 11th is the Act 34 hearing here in the Community Room. February 14th, Valentine's Day, we have an Education and Curriculum Meeting Committee Room, Community Room A at 6:00 PM. And on February 28th, at 5:45, there's a Policy Committee meeting in Board Caucus Conference Room Number Three. 6 o'clock is the Finance Committee in Community Room A, followed at 7 by the normal work session, regular voting meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Dr. Harner?
Oh.
For the benefit of the public, the diversity meeting that is next week, time and place?
Monday, 6:00 PM, here. Sorry, sir, I jumped in there on you, so...
And if you could give your feedback on February 2nd, the email that...
Or 6:30.
The email that went out about a possible weekend for...
Yeah, what time is that?
Eight to twelve, breakfast at eight.
All in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.